Okay, hello everyone and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Halton District School Board for Wednesday, May the 11th, 2022. I would like to welcome staff, trustees, and people who may be watching online either now or at some point in the future. And to start, we'll do, I will call the meeting to order and we'll do a roll call just so you know who is in the virtual room. And so I'm going to go through everyone tonight. And I'll let you know who's running behind and who may not be joining. So Chair Shuttleworth, I believe, may be late or have internet connectivity challenges. I am here. Trustee Daniele may be joining us shortly. Trustee Garrett.
Good evening from Nazcawaya, AKA North Milton.
Good evening. Trustee Gray.
Good evening from downtown Halton Hills.
Some trusty colored.
Good evening from the orchard in Burlington.
Trustee Grabance.
Hi, good evening from North Burlington.
Awesome. Trustee Reynolds.
Hi, everyone. Leah here from South Burlington and including Aldershot.
Awesome, welcome. Trustee Amos.
Good evening, everyone. Hello from North Oakville.
Welcome. And you sound a little quiet to me, but I can still hear you. Trustee Rocha will be joining us shortly. Trustee Oliver, are you here?
Good evening from Glen Abbey, Ward 4, Oakville.
Awesome. I love how somebody set the tone and everybody just fell, fell in there. That's awesome. And Director Ennis, welcome. Would you tell us who's here from the staff team?
Good evening, Flash J L Harrison and the rest of the trustees. We are happy to join you this afternoon. There are a number of staff away because of an offshore conference. But all the staff pertaining to the items on the agenda today will be here to support the agenda.
Okay, great. And since we're in Committee of the Whole, that'll be the last time that your formal handles will be utilized. It is a little less formal here and we can have that deeper conversation as well. Tonight, we'll be utilizing the Google Meets features such as Hands Up for voting and to, if we have votes on anything. And if you have a question, I'll just keep track and we'll do speakers list that way to simplify. Okay, we're on to item 1.3 and that is acknowledgement of traditional lands. And Jean, over to you.
Thank you very much. Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Atawandaran and the Haudenosaunee and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions. Land, water, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you very much. So we will go to item 1.4 now, which is approval of the agenda and it will be approval as revised. Yes, go ahead. Andrea, what's up?
I'm just willing to move it.
Ah, thank you very much. So let's, the revisions are under 3.4.3 related to the Governance Standing Committee. The newly added piece there, trustee operations policy. And I just want to check with Amy, is that, does the list look good at this point?
We're not going to do code of conduct because it's too heavy. It will take too long to go through all of the pieces. We thought two small pieces and, and a bigger piece being the committees and assignments or appointments. That will be a bigger one, but the rest of them are smaller and we thought it was a little bit more tolerable.
Okay, great. Thank you. And that's right. So there was a switch in and a switch out. So it is per, now as per shown under 3.4.3. Andrea has made the motion. Is there any discussion? Any objection to approving that agenda by unanimous consent then as revised? Okay, seeing no objection, that is approved by unanimous consent. And we'll look at the, speaking of consent, we'll look at the consent agenda. And we have the minutes from Committee of the Whole Meeting, April 13th, 2022, as attached to that agenda. Would somebody like to make that? Thanks very much, Jean. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Errors or omissions? Okay, any objection to approving those? Okay, therefore, the consent agenda, i.e. the minutes, is approved by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone. And so now we're into our presentation. So the substantive piece of our agenda. And 3.1, we have LTAP update and Director Ennis.
Thanks so much, Tracy. And we have Fred here with us this afternoon to lead us through this. So Fred, take it away. Fred has too many windows open. He's still looking for his mute button.
And in the meantime, I understand that we may have people in the virtual room with us who are celebrating birthdays. And I just want to say happy birthday. I wouldn't sing or anything like that so as to hurt everybody's ears. But happy birthday and thanks so much for joining on your, on your day. There Executive Officer, Gudet.
Thank you.
All right, I think it's worked. Sorry. Thank you, Tracy. You saved me. A little technical difficulty. Anyways, thanks for that. And yeah, so this is our third round presenting our new LTAP vision to the board of trustees tonight. And so again, thanks for taking the time. I'm really hoping to get through this one rather quick. We don't have as many updates as we had hoped. Initially, we thought we'd have the front end section ready to go for tonight. But instead, what we'll do is we'll discuss two other matters, one being the, the projects that we're proposing to present as part of the next LTAP for each of the municipalities and how those are formulated. And subject for further discussion before we hit the final version, because there's still being reviewed now. I'll give you a little bit of an update on how the draft key, or key performance indicators are looking based on our last conversation. And yeah, we'll talk about next steps afterwards. The other thing too, in terms of housekeeping, just so that you know, the folder for tonight's meeting includes all the documents that I mentioned earlier. So all of the bi-municipal project areas have been provided in that folder as well as the presentation for tonight. And an example of what the facilities section in each of the ERAs and municipalities are going to look like in general is also in the folder. So if you want to access that review and provide comments, we'll be reviewing those documents specifically. And we'll get back to that in the next steps. So we'll start with the KPIs this, this evening. We'll talk about our biggest conversation, which we left off last time around, which was surplus space in Halton and how we deal with it. So I really want to focus on that tonight. I'll give you a little bit of an overview of what the projects by municipality is going to look like and how we present that information and then next steps. So with regards to the key performance indicators, I don't want to go over this all again. But last meeting, what we had discussed is maybe adding a couple more. One was the water bottle filling station as well as major events such as additions or major renovations to the school. So happy to report that we'll be adding in the water bottom, bottle filling stations directly into the KPI section, which I'll show you in a moment. And then with regards to major event and renovations, those are going to be incorporated as part of the school profile. So then we can have more information in those sections. So those have been incorporated. So first and foremost, I do want to provide a caveat is that this is more of a visual representation of what we're looking to achieve as part of these key performance indicators. So this is what you'll be seeing in each municipal section as well as each elementary and secondary review area. The numbers right now are fake in that facility services in conjunction with planning and others are currently working on what are the targets that we're trying to achieve? How do we measure them? What are they? And essentially doing all the calculations as well. So this is more just to show you an idea of what we're envisioning in terms of the six key performance indicators on how we're going to be portraying this to the public and comparing contrasting. So as an example here, we'll take the number of schools with outdoor learning. What we're looking to do is, let's say our target is that all schools at least have one outdoor learning classroom. We'll report on how is Burlington doing in terms of meeting that target or how that ERA or SRA is. So is it all schools? Is it half the schools? And then we can compare it to the Halton region on how it's meeting the target as well as what the municipal target is as well. Tracy?
Yeah, I just wondered if we're supposed to see something?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I got sidetracked with my.
Intro, no worries. I just want to also take the opportunity to welcome trustee Rocha to the meeting. Go ahead.
Tracy, you're saving me tonight. Thank you. Pause, everyone. I did not hit share. So yes, this is what it's looking like. So we're looking to provide a little bit of a comparative of each one of these KPIs as to how it's, how we're faring both on municipal level as well as a bi-ERA, SRA. So another example, let's say, is the number of water bottle filling stations. Initially, we had an initiative where it's one per floor and it's just, you know, reporting on how we're doing in these specific geographic areas. And the intent of all this is to just, it's almost like a, I don't want to call it a report card, but just something to demonstrate how we are achieving in terms of meeting our overall targets and objectives as a board. And also providing us with an idea as to where to direct our efforts into our future capital projects that we're looking to advance in, in areas that are, that are specific geographies within the region. So again, just to go through quickly, we're talking about accessibility, percentage of the building that's accessible. The size of our sites relative to how many students are attending that school, our overall energy efficiency and the air conditioned space within a school, which is a, a carryover from our last close the gap funding piece. And again, this, while we'll go over this again, but this is also part and parcel with the facility information we're providing, which one of our other big key indicators is obviously the facility condition index. So we'll continue on, on reporting that. So that's where we've come to with the KPIs. We've really gone for a more visual representation. Again, having in mind our key target audience is, is the community, is our schools, is our administrators. And then focusing more on just giving the synopsis of the information to demonstrate how this area is far compared to others and where we're going to in the future. Any questions on that before I move on to the bigger discussion around surplus space? Perfect. All right. So surplus space. Last meeting, I left off with just asking a question to trustees, essentially asking, you know, how should we incorporate recommendations on potential options to reduce our surplus pupil spaces as part of our strategy? Again, we're aboard that in certain areas, we're starting to see quite a bit of surplus space and we need to find strategies and ways to address that. In terms of reducing and making sure that we're still able to qualify on, on our EDC funding for new sites. As well as just making sure that we're efficient and that we're investing in our students and not in empty spaces as well. Last time we discussed this, we, we went over the fact that we've got a limited number of options of how we can address this space. We have boundary views, we have community partnerships, right sizing and consolidations and closures, which is obviously in the, in the moratorium right now. But in anticipation of this, we definitely want to plan and start expressing this to our, our community as to what we see to the future so that we can best equip them. Because from what I gathered from our last conversation on this matter is the more information they have ahead of time, the more or less painstaking the process will be, the more prepared to be and more informed and aware of what's happening and understanding the why. So what I want to do tonight is, is go through each one of those rather quickly and explain how, as part of our project lists, how we're addressing those, those actions with those strategies for addressing accommodation issues, not only for surplus, but also for growth. But they tie into one another. So in this example here, you know, we have boundary use processes that are ones that have been utilized quite a bit. We've recently done a few already. Where we're just looking at rebalancing enrollment between two schools as kind of our first step, saying, you know, if we have overrealization another and under, can we find a way to bridge the gaps? So at least both of them have a more sustainable utilization. So a lot of these situations where we're proposing any projects within specific ERAs and municipalities. Well, you'll see the text, initiate boundary view to balance enrollment, improve utilization between two schools. So this will be the standard text we use in the summary tables, just to advise communities that here's a flag, here's this is what we expect to happen. And then for each one of these projects, we're also going to be providing a little bit of a, an idea of what the timing of that project is. When is it going to be initiated? When's it going to be started? And what we'll note, you'll note in the later sections is that we're trying to classify them not just by target year, but also look at, using other metrics. What, what we've seen is that in the past where maybe something hasn't happened, we keep pushing the year back. So the year changes from LTAP iteration to LTAP iteration, which can make it confusing. So what we're proposing now is that if a boundary view is, is known that we have to do it by a certain date, then we'll provide that target date. If it's triggered by something like a new development moving ahead, or if it's triggered by the opening of a new school, then we'll call it event based. So we don't necessarily have timing tied to it yet because we don't know. But we can explain when that event is going to be or what the event is so that they have a better idea of the community or those that are impacted by this. And TBD is another one where if we just don't know and that it's on our radar that something needs to be done, we'll address it at a later time. In terms of community planning and partnership, as we discussed, like this one's been one that we've been trying to achieve utilizing our empty spaces for quite some time now with not as much success. Because it's all based on are there needs in that community for additional services? If the answer is no, then this does not necessarily work in trying to take some of that on. That said, the new piece that's presented itself now with the recent federal announcement is we'll need more childcare spaces. So it hasn't started yet, but we'll see if this has somewhat of a, an impact on whether or not could start you using that as a way to fill up our empty spaces. But again, that's yet to be seen. So alternatively, what we're looking at is partnership and all the partnerships in our schools to reduce empty spaces really is going to be combined and coupled with other initiatives like new capital projects or right sizing projects as things were, it's, it can't just be a standalone, it has to be tied to something else because that usually it, it, it's not successful on its own, or we haven't been able to make it successful. So that's kind of where the childcare piece ties in. So as an example here, it'd be, you know, a major capital project like we discussed in the past for a potential rebuild or a review of the Burlington Central project. Just saying that as part of that project, also look if there's any other community partners I'd like to build with us as opposed to just using existing space. So this one is again acknowledging it's not the best tool in reducing empty spaces. It could be something coupled with other initiatives to make it more effective. This is one where we're really getting to more of the physical reduction of spaces. So our first one is the right sizing opportunities where if we see schools that are in our system, that have a significant wing or number of classrooms that are no longer utilized and that there's no system need for an alternative use, that boundary views aren't needed because all the other schools are well utilized or things like that are not affected that we can look at. Well, do we demolish that space and keep the core area of the school that's most effective? Knowing that a lot of our schools have had previous additions in the past or may have wings in the building that are maybe in more disrepair that may no longer be needed for utilization or, or, or keeping it as an asset. So there might be an opportunity there. Or if we can't convert it, or if there's an opportunity even to convert it to something else, like we discussed, either childcare and administrative wing, storage or, or things of that nature. We can start looking at schools that may have a very surplus of space and then start looking at feasibility studies on how we can address that. Is it's alternative uses or is it demolition? So what you'll see in some of the text samples of the projects we provide, or sorry, some of the, the projects we provide, you might see text that says explore opportunities to convert, consolidate empty classrooms. So right sizing a school. So that's one strategy we'll be looking at in those projects. And last but not least, the biggie is our pars. So when we've gone through the process of looking at all other options, whether it's a boundary view, we've looked at community partnerships, right sizing, if all of that has been expended and we still have a surplus space issue and there's no real solution to it. I think it's at that point where we've satisfied ourselves and said, we've not been successful in taking this off the books. Now we have to look at closures and consolidations. Acknowledging again that the ministry moratorium is in effect, so we don't have the ability to do that yet. But that does not prevent us to start notifying the community that if we don't have a solution by a certain point in time, we'll have to start looking at reviewing solutions in terms of removing it and explaining why this needs to be done in a community. The other thing too is, two things. One is if there are plans where there could be a consolidation of three facilities into one with a rebuild or an addition or addressing a facility condition of the school that we keep or just saying we're removing it all from the books. I think it's, it's best to say that these are some of the opportunities that are available in this community while not predetermining the outcome. And the second thing too, I want to note is we really need to be careful on how we approach this with our rural and our urban schools. They're two very different beasts. And if we are undertaking it in any rural setting, we have to look at it with a different lens essentially. So some sample text that you might see in areas that we're starting to look at as potential candidates for future pars. You'll see words around the being like initiate a program and accommodation review if feasibility studies to review, reduce space is unsuccessful. So we've had a few of those. There's some in Burlington, Halton Hills that we've incorporated as part of our, our planned projects that we've circulated at tonight. And this is the kind of wording that you'll see. This is the kind of notice we're providing to the community.
We have a couple of questions here?
Yeah, so I was supposed to say, so I'll have to take questions before we get into the project section.
Okay, so I just want to recognize and welcome trustee Daniele. Donna joined us about 10 minutes ago. Just wanted to make note of that. And then we do have a speakers list on that topic. So maybe, do you want to go back to that kindly, go back to the slide before? Because I think that's where the questions are. And we have Amy, Joanna, and then Jean.
Mine is more of a commentary. The province refers to these as pupil accommodation reviews. But here in Halton, we've always called them program and accommodation reviews. And I was very pleased to see that you still maintain that phrase in your text because we want it always to be about programming for students and not just bums in seats. Thank you.
Joanna?
Yes, I'm just wondering, the previous slide when, where you were talking about how surplus spaces could be used. When it comes to demolition, how is that funded?
So for demolition, we can look at, it's, it's something I want to take back because I know of one revenue source. But we had, in my experience in the past, I have asked the ministry for funding through capital priorities to remove a portion of the building and then replace it with a smaller addition. So if there was a wing of the, this example, there was a wing of the building that was prohibitive to repair. We didn't need the full number of classrooms, we needed less. And then we asked, can you provide us the funding to demolish it as well as capital funding to build a new renewed wing? And we also coupled it with a, a childcare as well, just to, and it was kind of a package deal. So that the ministry funded us the demolition. I might turn to Executive Officer Gudet to see if there's any other revenue sources. But usually I'd say we could ask the Ministry of Education as a, for a source of funding because it is an option in the capital priority submissions to, to right sizing projects.
Just add Fred's comments. I would say that I've used school renewal in the past. So school renewal is one of our more flexible pots of money to spend from and it used to be a suitable funding source to do that as well, to right size a facility, clean up portables, for example. So I've, I've used that in the past.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jean.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to move it to the next slide if you would, Fred. I, I really love that you included the rural and urban must be reviewed in different contexts. Certainly, as you look to schools that are well spaced out apart, some of them up here in Halton Hills. And recognize that if the school wasn't in that community, then we would be incurring tremendous costs and transportation. It's a very complex decision and so many, many different factors having to come into play before any discussions take place. But I'm so pleased to see that you recognize that there's different contexts needed for rural versus urban. I just wanted to direct a question, if I may, to Curtis. Have you in any of your discussions at code heard of any renewal of discussions at the provincial level? I know everybody's kind of lying low right now because we have a provincial election. But prior to that, had there been any, I guess, any indication that the government was on to looking at this? This is something that they put into moratorium very soon after they came into government four years ago. So it's a long time. And I know right across the province, there are lots of different areas that would be wanting to know when this may return.
No, Jean, I have not heard this conversation about, you know, reopening or providing funding for renewal at the provincial table. So I, I would imagine like many other things, it's after the election that we might begin to hear some, you know, direction. But as you, as you've pointed out, this has been a long time coming, but I don't think we're going to hear anything until after the election.
Okay, thank you.
I have two things. One of them is just about our timing here. And is there, there's just the one short little part after this? Yeah. Okay. And the second question about this topic is I wonder if there's alignment in terms of ministry. Which things would be preferred over which things? Because you said that having exhausted all other, that we would consider a par. And so one of those all other things is the right sizing of the school. But if we are getting less flexible in other funding areas and these would have to go through capital renewals money, then it would be pretty important that the ministry also sees the right sizing as a step before forcing boards, not force, before undertaking these par processes, if you know what I mean. And I don't know if that alignment's there because I don't know how many times those funding requests have been made. You know, I read today about some boards, they've requested the same thing six times over and it's still not happening. So, and I know the money's not getting more plentiful.
So I, you know, I'd say i- i- it all depends on the context. And I think that to the ministry's point, if they're looking at it, you know, if we've done right sizing and we've, and they're not funding it or we're proposing those kinds of projects and they're not funding it, then that's certainly a conversation to be had and better understanding uh, why that is, especially if it's, if it's looking at being more efficient as a board, which we've had that directive numerous times, especially with the present government. So it, it, you know, and on the other hand too, they're not allowing us to close. So I, it's an interesting question and conversation to be had as to, you know, at what point is it time to close schools? And I guess on our end too, I, I do want to say this, you know, we're going to look at the feasibility of right sizing too. And if we're seeing that in just reducing space in the school, removing a wing, you know, is, is part of it, it's reducing capacity. But if we're seeing that it doesn't really address the renewal needs of that school or long term, there's still going to be issues in other facilities. And we don't want to just be reducing capacity at all these schools and creating very small campuses at a certain point where we have to look at and be what's best to provide the programs that we want to provide for our students. And if it is consolidating these schools and looking at building a new facility in an area that combines all of them within a closer geography, you know, that's part of the discussion, that's part of the feasibility and looking at, is this the rational point for it? Because if the ministry's not funding it, um, there might be something we have to look to ourselves and saying, is this the best approach? Or should we be looking at alternative ones? Again, acknowledging that the other alternative isn't available to us yet, but it's part of the review. And before we get into expending money or doing these big projects, we want to make sure we look at all the options as well. I, I hope that that answers or provides you a little bit of insight of what we're envisioning on this front.
Thank you. No other questions from people at this time?
All right, wonderful. So I'll just clear through this. So in terms of the, the future projects, again, what we provided in the folder here, um, this won't be the final format. The final format will be a little bit more to the same visual style as the rest of the LTAP. But what we've done in the table is, and the, the, the way that we've organized it will be much the same way. So a few things that are new from what we've done in the last LTAP. Now we're going to be categorizing and you've seen this probably in the ERA sections, but again, we're going to be categorizing projects on immediate, medium and long term. So things that are more immediate is what's expected in a one year, one to two year period. Medium, three to five years and long term are things that may fluctuate a lot more and you'll see more of these TBDs where we're not too sure uh, when it's going to happen, but we know it's in our, it's on our radar. We know it's there. So that way, if anybody's asking like, what's happening with this development? Like we see it coming down the road. Timing is still indefinite. So that's how we've categorized them. And like I mentioned earlier with some of these initiatives, uh, timing is another piece that we're discussing. So the year of impact has been pretty standard as to what we've been using in the past. Um, if we're not sure, if we can see that there is going to be a lot of fluctuation based on things that are outside of our control in terms of that timing, are we relying on new development, on a ministry capital priority submission or things like that? We might just categorize one of those projects as event based. This will happen when this happens or we'll, we'll take this action when this, uh, this trigger occurs. And last but not least, there's TBD where we know it's coming, but we have no timelines because we're still very much in the early stages of the project. So you'll see that throughout a lot of these proposals that we put forward. And again, they're in that folder. Uh, and then lastly, our intent is that within the ERA and SRA specific section, so what you saw there is going to be more on the municipal summary side of things. By ERA and SRA, um, we want to give a little bit more detail. So it's talking about the type, the issue, the proposed action and the target date. Um, and the most important of these is the issue. I think it's always very important to explain why we're doing what we're doing. So this will be the, the home of where we're providing a little bit of a glimpse or a rationale as to why we're proposing this project in the future. So at least there's some rationale behind it and it's just not another project in the list that doesn't have additional details tied to it. Um, so with that, oh, Leah, I just saw your, your question.
Yes, um, uh, through the vice chair, I have a question about the, I want to say the communication to the, to the community when a project comes up on the LTAP. One of the things that I found was helpful was, um, being able to articulate to the community, how long has this issue precipitated? Like, uh, for example, in our experience of the, of the par, we had documented 12 years more of identifying this as an issue. So there was definitely a pattern and a timetable of, I want to say evidence. So when we have projects that are, you know, in the next couple of years coming, I think it's really important if they haven't been on the docket that, you know, the community being made aware of what changed, why is it on now? And, and what, what, what changes impacted, um, you know, this school having a boundary view now? And, uh, you know, I, I think it just shows people or takes them on the, the, you know, the, not only the timeline, but the continuum of thinking that our board is doing when we're evaluating projects to undertake. So if you see that a school has been sort of, you know, um, for four years, you know, or five years or six years showing evidence that there it's continuing to grow, then you have a, I would say a really good argument to, to, to share your, your, um, you know, decision to undertake. So I guess my comment was just that I, knowing the history and documenting the history of the, the, um, you know, the patterns is really important so that people see it's not just coming out of left field. There's a long history of this recommendation. It's been on the books. You've been warned five years ago, four years ago, three years ago, it's happening.
A- a- and just to clarify, so that'd be something so that when we move forward with commencing a project, uh, let's say, let's call it a boundary view for argument's sake. Are you saying that, um, I'm coming to the board to get approval for the boundary view process? And in my report to you, I'm going to say this has been in the LTAP since this date or, okay, I understand. So not necessarily in the LTAP, but more so when we're going to implement or initiate the process. Um, we have a, a record of when it was, uh, first conceived or first added.
Yes, thank you. And I think this, this is kind of a transparent sharing, uh, that the community will expect. They want to see that it's not, not coming out of left field. It's not just something, you know, they haven't been paying attention, but we have been and we have this. Um, you know, we, we, we share them the journey because it is a journey. We're continuing to look at it. Is it, you know, is the, uh, is the, you know, pressures increasing, decreasing? But it gives, I, I think having that, giving that timeline of how long this has been happening, you know, sort of gives more evidence to people because we have our predictions for the future. But I think showing how far behind us we've been doing this is really important.
Well, that's something I'll take back. And I think there's a, there's probably a few ways we can go about that, reporting on it. All right, wonderful. Well, being kind of said at times. So again, next steps is we've provided the list of the projects by municipality. It's in the community, the whole agenda. I, I think anybody who has access to that has access to write or at least comment. So if there's anything you have questions with regards to or comments, uh, either email planning services myself um, and or add comments and then, and let us know. Um, so again, thanks for your time. I do appreciate it and feel free to give us any other questions that come along your way. Uh, maybe last piece is we haven't heard much on the ERA SRA format, so we'll be moving ahead with the format as we presented in previous months. And we'll start moving ahead with getting all that done. Um, because we, uh, we've got a lot to get together for our next, uh, presentation of this. So thanks again for your time and I do appreciate it.
Thank you. And to Leah's last point, and I know this came up quite a bit when I first came into this role. There were questions about, you know, the formula that are applied and uh, that has been broken out and explained now, I believe upfront in the LTAP. I also wonder about, and I guess this is slightly off topic, but some way to show that those forecasts have generally been accurate over a period of time at, from an aggregate perspective, you know? Last time I asked, we were within point, whatever, point seven, five percent or something, which is pretty darn good. And, um, also really helped the people that were asking me uh, to gain some confidence in terms of that methodology that's now been explained. So just a comment to, to leave with, it grew out of Leah's comment there. And, uh, thank you very much. And we can go to then the budget conversation. And through you, Director Enes Curtis, uh, our, and Roxana Ware and team, go ahead.
Yes, I would not take on the budget if Roxana is here. Roxana?
Thank you. Uh, I will present my screen and, um, we'll go through the slides. Um, please, uh, note that you can ask questions throughout the slides as well as towards the end. Um, and joining us today, uh, is Jackie Sweetman, our controller of financial services, as well as Jay Chantavong, the budget manager, who are behind all the work in trying to fit all the pieces of the puzzle. Um, and every year has been becoming more and more challenging. Uh, Jackie actually mentioned something to me a few weeks, a couple of weeks ago, that in her over 30 years, uh, working on the budget process, this must be by far the most challenging one with, um, you know, just in terms of the various funding streams, the one-time investments, the timelines for half a year um, and two models of learning and all the demand and requests for schools and everything that changes in between. And just thinking about that, you know, um, that says, says a lot in terms of how complex, um, our world has become, uh, our system and just what our staff have been working through in terms of the last couple of years of the pandemic. So I will, uh, share the presentation on my screen. Okay. So I cannot see you anymore, but I hope everybody can see the presentation.
Yes. Yes.
All right. So very, uh, similar with other draft budgets, uh, we were able to, um, gather all the input. Uh, changes have been coming in as late as 4:30 on Friday in terms of, uh, program allocations, impact on transportation. Uh, and today we are very happy to present you with a draft budget. An update to revenue and expenses as well as the budget pressures. Uh, we will then go into the capital projects, uh, for next year and our financial position, which also requires a, an, um, plan to eliminate the deficit within a two-year period. And finally, a quick overview of the year-end projection for the current year. Um, so I will go quickly through just the first couple of, uh, generic slides in terms of the budget process uh, that has been aligned with the multi-year plan, uh, and operating plan, as well as the special education plan, which are being currently developed and presented in June to the board together with the budget. Uh, we've reviewed the corporate risk profile, uh, this month as well. We do that on a bi-weekly, I'm sorry, bi-annual uh, basis in terms of determining the risks associated with our ability to meet uh, and support the strategic priorities. Uh, as well as, uh, taking into account all the enveloping, uh, requirements, regulatory compliance and accountability measures within, um, the Education Act and the accounting standards. So quickly here on the budget timelines, we are on May 11th, the draft presentation to the committee. Um, at this point, uh, following your feedback, we will, uh, finalize and review one more time all the components of the budget and prepare the first draft report for June the first. We'll be working on the budget book, um, as well at the same time. And for June 15th, we'll have a final budget report for board approval. Enrollment has not changed from our presentation in April. Um, we are still looking, when we look at budget to budget, a very slight increase in both panels and budget revised estimates. Uh, we're looking at a slight decrease in the elementary panel and more, um, of an increase in the secondary panel, mostly as a result of a larger grade eight moving into the secondary panel and, uh, smaller entry grades, uh, coming into the elementary panel. Uh, we've been monitoring the registrations and, uh, we do see that, uh, enrollment for elementary is on track, seems to be on track. Uh, secondary is a little bit lagging behind, uh, but not by much. So nothing that would flag, uh, requirement to adjust the projections as we've had them here. History wise, we've been a growth board over the last number of years, with the exception of 2020, when we've, uh, had lower enrollment and then it tapered off, uh, for the last two years. Uh, as we're still, uh, dealing with, uh, higher numbers of homeschooling as well as migration out of the Halton region, or I, I should, I should say, out of the urban areas within the GTA and, uh, further into the rural areas of the province. Uh, as a result of a remote, uh, working for parents uh, and potentially, uh, more affordable housing for families. We, uh, we have updated the revenue, uh, based on, uh, putting information through the forms, uh, the ministry forms. And our provincial grant, the Grants for Student Needs proportion is slightly lower than the prior years at 88.7 as opposed to 90 or 91% in the prior years. And just on the next slide, uh, we'll go through, well, the next few slides, we'll go through all of these areas. So I will move on to, uh, just overall, you've seen the slide in, um, April. However, it's been updated since, as I mentioned. Uh, so our grants for student needs have increased, uh, year over year when we compare budget to budget by 26.3 million. Mainly as a result of, uh, uh, the 1% increase in compensation and 4% in the benefit benchmark as well as some increases to, um, reflect inflation in the non-salary components of the grant. Uh, and, uh, the COVID supports, uh, have been now included in the Grants for Student Needs and moved from the provincial grant other, which is one of the main reasons why we show a decrease in the provincial grant other because $9 million, um, that would have been captured through there have now moved up in the Grants for Student Needs, although it's still a timed investment. It's only for one year for next year. And, um, every year, I, I guess we would be reevaluating where we are in terms of the pandemic and the needs. Um, there is an election on June 2nd, uh, so we'll, we'll see who, uh, is the, um, elected government and whether or not those priorities may change the, for the future, uh, years. Uh, for the 2122 budget, we did have half of that nine million, uh, being, um, allocated at budget time and, uh, later in the year, the other half. Uh, so that's why the number is, uh, larger than the current year. Um, other than that, we are, uh, quite, um, close to the current year with the exception of, uh, the School General Funds, uh, estimating a more. estimating a more regular year in terms of trips and excursions and fundraising. So bringing that back up to an estimated 10, 20 million and additional education development charges, which are reflected in other fees and revenues, as well as amortization of deferred capital contributions goes up with the additional capital projects and opening of new schools. So the Grants for Student Needs, which is most of our funding and also the basis for our provincial allocation that determines the compliance of the budget. So as you recall, the boards have the ability to approve a compliant budget that's a deficit budget up to 1% of the provincial allocation. And it considers most of these items in the 767 million. So for us, that 1% is approximately 7.5 million. There's many allocations within the Grants for Student Needs. Most of them relate to the Pupil Foundation Grant that is the student-facing staff and resources, as well as indirectly looking at the school foundation, school operations, transportation, and renewal in capital for our students. So a lot of indirect allocations that support our students and our students' learning. So here's the thought bubbles that we've added just with a couple of nuggets in terms of what are some of the main reasons for the increase or decrease in some of the allocations within the Grants for Student Needs. Mostly, the increases are due to a bit of an enrollment growth that we're projecting budget to budget and the 1% increase in salary, 4% in benefits, the insured benefits, as well as the inflation cost increases in the school, the school operations allocation. There have been additional grants that have moved to Grants for Student Needs that were one-time under Priorities and Partnership Funds, or what we call PPFs, as they relate to mental health and special education. So you'll see that the mental health and wellbeing and the special education have also increased by the addition of some of these grants. The special education in particular does increase with the increase in the overall enrollment, as well as with the, any updates in terms of our statistical models and demographic data that is built behind some of the tables that derive that grant. And COVID supports, you'll see the $9 million added there that are not in last year's budget, but they have been added in the GSN this year as a temporary measure. Temporary accommodations is one that has gone up by about a million. So certainly a great surprise there as Temporary Accommodation is a $40 million provincial pot of money that just gets reallocated based on how many portables school boards have. The more you add to the system, the more the grant would go up. And it, but it is just reallocation. It does not cover our costs. So we're still spending more than what that allocation brings in. Other revenues, the tuition fees for international students remain similar to last year, a little bit lower at this point. We only look at the registrations we currently have, so we don't estimate any growth. And sometimes halfway through the year, we may have some additional international students that are registering for a semester only. The rental income is a little lower than the budget for last year, mainly as a result of the Pearson lease coming to an end this current year. So it's not reflected in next year. And miscellaneous income, I believe that also included rollover of the Support for Students funding that is tied to collective agreements. It was a free-year term. However, due to negotiations, the, by the time they were negotiated, there was only two years and a bit left of the free-year term. So there was a rollover component that did not continue. So therefore, that amount is not part of our revenue for next year. It's only the annual amount, the base amount that has been provided as a timed investment while negotiations are about to start in next year. And education development charges, looking at all the units that are about to come online, looking at the applications we've seen this year. We've seen a drastic increase in education development levies being submitted. And we've brought that up by about 6.5 million. So in terms of operating expense, a total of 855 million, most of that is instruction, so 77.5%. And so that's direct cost of instructions for students. And the indirect cost of instruction includes the pupil accommodation, which refers to the maintenance and keeping of the schools, school buildings, school grounds, transportation for students. And most of the other category, the 3.8, refers to the school-generated funds. So really, when we're looking at all the pieces of the puzzle here, administration is 2.1% and everything else directly and indirectly benefits our students. So here's the numbers behind the percentages that we've just discussed. And what we have in terms of instruction, we'll go into the next slides in between separating the 38.6 million in salary increases and non-salary increases. We do have, as I mentioned before, the compensation increases. We have step increases in various employee units depending on experience of staff. We have significant increases in contractual services as well as our licensing fees, as well as increase in the transportation and the accommodation, pupil accommodation, which is the maintenance of schools as well as the amortization of buildings. We've updated the budget pressures once we were able to have both revenues and expenses compared. And here's a bit of the situation in terms of the financial challenges. Special education and mental health funding exceed, sorry, I should say, special education and mental health costs and programming exceed the funding by approximately 18 million on an annual basis. So even with the additional funding that was provided and the increase in funding that we've seen in both of those lines, we are still in an $18 million deficit. Learning recovery, we have received 2.8 million to spend in tutoring supports this year up until the end of August and another 2.8 million to spend between September and December in 2223. However, maintaining those supports beyond December, we are looking at approximately $3 million that we are supporting from a mix of the COVID supports funds and reserves. Temporary accommodations, I've mentioned this, that the costs exceed the grant by 1 million, even though we did receive an additional $1 million in funding. And a lot of the temporary accommodation pressures are as a result of which capital priorities, business cases are approved, when are all the approvals received, when we are able to complete the schools. And in the meantime, the school community is experiencing more portable needs at the existing schools, redirecting boundary changes. So there certainly is, the growth areas have quite a bit of challenge in terms of accommodating growth. And that continues to be Milton and North Oakville. I should say, South Milton more and North Oakville. From a perspective of coverage and supply costs, these have been going up. And we also have quite a bit of a challenge in securing sufficient coverage across the system as a result of the pandemic requirements for isolation, as well as a lot of the resources that we've added in terms of additional teaching and non-teaching staff that support our classrooms are drawing down the supply pool of candidates that are then available to go in and replace daily absences. And we see that still being the case next year. So we still expect that to be a challenge. Virtual schools, and I remember there was a question at our last presentation. Low registration for virtual schools next year. We've mentioned that we are required to maintain a number of classrooms. At the elementary panel, we're maintaining certain classrooms so that there is no triple grade for students if we have to combine classes. The secondary level, we're also looking at making sure that there is a base program available so that students can have meaningful courses to, you know, finish their year and to graduate. So when we look at the incremental cost of virtual school, we're looking at approximately $2 million, which is covered through the COVID support funding. Facility costs have increased significantly as a result of, I've mentioned, the contractual services. That is a reflection of the market conditions and the inflation, the supply chain delays and the cost increases of various products, which are then trickling into our invoices for next year. Transportation costs significantly grew again this year as a result of additional programming, opening a new school, fuel and inflation. And we are currently looking at approximately being 3 million over the allocation. Trustees will remember that in the past few years, so it hasn't been this past year, but before that, our consortium for the Halton Region was rated as a high-efficiency consortium because we are following the right approach in terms of reviewing our routes for efficiencies, combining the distance for eligibility, et cetera, doing all the right things in order to minimize the cost or contain the cost and the growth within, you know, current routes as much as possible. And as a result, the ministry had provided school boards with a high efficiency rating with additional top-up funding for our board. That was around the $800,000 mark, which has not been received this year and is not proposed or discussed for next year either. In addition, the ministry had allocated a 2% increase to help with inflation. However, that amount was not provided to school boards. So it hasn't actually been released to us. And I am not sure at this point if that 2% is going to be allocated to school boards just as a proportion of our funding. So 2% on our funding, which for us would be around 400,000, or in a different manner, depending on various needs. So they are not quite sure yet as to how that funding is going to be released. So we are short about 1.2 million in funding from a couple of years ago, if we compare. And that has increased our deficit in this allocation, which now is approaching that $3 million mark. And the other pressure, about 2.3 million unfunded increases to the statutory benefit rates, the CPP and EI. Every year, they've been going up for the past couple of years. However, there is no metric in the Grants for Student Need to catch up with those, the employer's proportion for those rates. I think I heard a...
Yes, Andrea has a question.
Yes, well, a couple of things. One, I'm quite, I mean, it's frustrating that the statutory benefits rise and yet we are not compensated. Where do they expect us to get these funds? Considering we are, you know, a publicly funded institution, it's bizarre to me. But I, you know, adding all this up, it's like 29.3 million that are kind of highlighted around here. Now, I know you said there's some offset here and there. Wow, that's, that's all above the enveloped areas, right? I know that this is a very important piece of information for our community to know. And I was wondering, when you take, when you bring the draft budget to the board reading, would you be willing to put up this slide? So that, you know, our community understands the pressures that we are going through. Because I'm just, yeah, your team is doing an amazing job. But it's verging on having to be almost magical to pull money from places. And the other, I had a sort of a separate question. I can go back on the list, though.
Okay, go ahead, Roxana, on the first one about willing to display this.
Yes, absolutely. We can put this up on June 1st. And other than the 3 million in learning recovery and the 2 million in virtual school incremental costs, which is covered through mostly that COVID funding, the rest are within our GSN allocation and certainly putting a strain on our ability to continue the same programming level. And a lot of it comes at the cost of deferred maintenance of schools and all the other areas that we can cut, which are the resources and supplies for our system. So it does come at a cost. Yes, we are balancing it or spending less in other allocations in order to be able to balance. You will see in the later slides that, well, we're not able to balance. We are in a deficit position of 7.3 million. And certainly, these challenges are impacting that position.
Thank you. So we'll go to Jean and then back to Andrea.
Yes, thank you very much. I noted that in your budget development process, that on May 3rd, the SEAC group was able to have a budget presentation. And I wondered if they had a response to this particular slide here showing that our needs exceed funding by approximately 18 million. I don't know whether they took any action or planned to take any action on that kind of news. The second point I wanted to talk about was the increased transportation costs. I know that you've tried to look into your crystal ball, you and your staff, about the increase in potential costs for transportation. But wow, as we have seen mind-twisting increases in gas in the last couple of weeks, I'm not sure how you're able to really look at that. And might we see what is right now reported to be a $3 million over-allocation? Might that in fact balloon if we see that the costs continue to go up? Thank you very much.
Thank you for that question. So with regards to special education presentation, we didn't have quite all the updated slides for them. We're still working through it. We did mention that the special education was around this $18 million overspend. It is in part as a result of a conscious decision in order to support our students with exceptionalities, to support the increasing mental health and wellbeing of, needs of our students. They did not offer or necessarily suggest anything that would contain the cost. I think the discussion was more around what are the additional resources we're offering because there's some pressing needs, because various exceptionalities or areas have some requests in terms of what they would perceive as areas being in need of additional funding as opposed to less. So certainly not... So certainly not, um, the discussion around that was more as we go for the next slides. Is here's what we're adding, some of them being permanent staff, some of them are one-time staff in order to continue to support a system. And I I think that went well, there was, uh, I have not heard any questions or concerns that we are not. Adding sufficient uh resources for next year. Um, which is typically something that we would hear, so that so that I would take that as a positive uh outcome. Uh, but at the same time, looking into the future, I think eh there will be. Uh, if especially if our our funding is continues not to keep up with these pressures. Like uh inflation increases and statutory benefit rates going up. And all these things that we have no, um, you know, power to change the outcome. Uh, if they continue to go up and use our flexibility within the funding to reallocate. There there will be a time when we will have to sit down and look at our programming. And look at our supports and see where we need to change how we do things so that we can uh do so with less. And in terms of transportation costs, um, there is a fuel escalator that. Typically gets released uh towards the end of the year, so we would capture that uh at the year end. And I'm hoping uh that uh will certainly um. You know, help not to increase this uh allocation. Um, our budget does have, here's the full cost, but if there are savings for the year. Then that three million dollar being over-allocation will be lower at the end of the year. So I'm hopeful, we're not going to end up the year with a three million over-transportation funding. But with less than that, given those two factors.
Thank you, uh, back to Andrea.
Uh, my my question uh Jean asked was about the transportation.
Okay, super, and just to comment about this, uh. Because nobody else is on the list at the moment, you also mentioned. I guess some areas where reductions have been made in order to, like the trade-offs thinking that is happening. And I just, I wonder whether. That's, it's possible to display that piece somehow. I guess we can see it in some of the charts, maybe down below. But we are making choices. Uh, here to support certain areas. That's that's all, and I I think that um. When we look back to that budget survey, community members were, nobody asked for less. Everybody was asking for something additional. And in this climate, um. It feels like, yeah, it's not possible, and the these uh tough choices are going to continue.
Uh, absolutely, yes, um. And as we go for some of the additions we note, um, you'll see a lot of them reflect the comments that we've received. In terms of uh from a survey perspective, a lot of it was around more staffing supports. That are uh in front of students, whether they were teachers and tutors and graduation coaches. Or um special education and mental health supports. All of that uh has resonated over and over in the survey. Um, and you will see uh a lot of it being part of the the slides where we're doing some additions. Some of the concessions we did have to make is how many we can make permanent with the increase in funding. How many remain as a one-time addition, which unfortunately that is not going to be guaranteed. That the next year will continue to have the same level of supports. And they're quite significant, that are one-time only.
And may I just follow up and ask what class size assumptions have gone into this? Are are we assuming the maximum class sizes that are allowable?
Yes, our staffing is always based on the regulated um class sizes. Uh, so depending on the panel, uh, there's class sizes uh for um the kindergarten. That are different from uh grades one to three and then grades four to um five are higher. And for secondary, they go to twenty-three, which is what has been agreed upon in collective agreements. So we use that as a class size for compliance reasons. And of course, uh, an average class size does not mean that every class will be. For example, in the secondary panel, every class will have twenty-three students. It means that the more um mandatory popular courses may have twenty-eight or thirty students. And some of the um optional courses, which are equally important uh for various pathways. And um needs for graduation may have seventeen or eighteen students. So it balances out to an average of twenty-three, and that's what we use. And that's what the funding is based on as well.
Thank you, there's no more questions.
Okay. Um, so I think we've we've gone through the next few slides, I won't spend that much time uh on them. Uh, you'll note the increases, which are both the increases in uh teaching staff, step increases, compensation increases. And they're reflected here, um. I I think I heard a question as well.
You did, Andrea.
Yes, uh, my question is um around the staff development. Uh, how there is a decrease, uh, and I I just worry that with. Um, you know, the the uh. The increased mental health and and other pressures. Um, that are 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 we going to be able to meet our staff development or training needs? Um, so that students are supported um as our the budgets reflecting to go down.
Uh, tha- that's an excellent uh question. Um, staff development was maintained uh similar to this year. But in that number, it's also components of staff development that may come uh later in the year as well. Through uh additional uh part uh priorities and partnership funding, the PPFs. And they sometimes have a proportion of uh PD. So when we, depending on what was announced one year versus the other, I mean, I think the eighty-eight thousand. Might be just a a product of that, um, we haven't actually reduced. That, uh, the some reductions that we've done was more on the um. The mileage side, uh, given that we are continuing to have some virtual sessions. As opposed to the release time. For the uh for professional development.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Excuse me, uh, Amy, you're up.
Uh, my question is about teacher librarians. Um, the librarian guidance line goes down by one point five million. I actually anticipated it would go down by more than that with the loss of teacher librarians. But I know that we still have library technicians and the guidance counselors are still included in that number. I, I hold out hope. And um it's a fervent hope that we will see the return of teacher librarians um to our elementary schools. At some point in the near future. And um I'm encouraged that uh that line item doesn't save us as much money as I thought it would. And so perhaps it's not quite as expensive to put them back as I might have thought. And I'll just leave that there, because I know that's not for this year's budget. But uh I don't want to ever forget that teacher librarians are vital to our elementary schools, thanks.
Thank you for that, um. The reduction is a net of the reduction in teacher librarians. And the addition of seventeen uh library technicians, so it's the net of the two. Um, and then the classroom teacher increase also includes the addition of um. And and Jackie or Jay may may correct me, I thought it was around fifteen or twelve or fifteen. Um, um, i- instructional uh resource teachers that work with the students. Uh, one-on-one, so supporting learning recovery. Um, so there was no saving to the budget, the the decision was more. A reallocation of resources uh so that those teachers moved to a different role. In terms of assisting our students with learning recovery.
Thank you, yes, I I understand that, it's just um for me, that the loss of teacher librarians is the loss of a common touch point. For every single student in a school. And um, I am hopeful that we will be able to recover that position, thanks.
Thank you for that. Okay, um, so moving on to just a couple of other breakdowns of our uh expenses. Um, within the administration and governance, uh, the increase there is uh as it relates to. The one percent that is applied uh to the salary compensation of uh staff below supervisory officers. And the step increases within that, so that's about half of that amount. With the other half being increases to our uh system licenses, uh maintenance fees. Uh, and the upgrade uh for one system that has been pending. Um, and with regards to people transportation, uh, the changes uh are uh mostly. As it relates to uh additional um routes, uh opening a new school. As well as additional self-contained classes and locations. Pupil accommodation, um, with regards to the operations and maintenance, has gone up by uh two million. Um, mostly, again, it refers to that uh bump in compensation. Um, move on the salary grid for um those staff that have um. There are different levels in their experience. And quite a significant increase as well, when we look at our contractual services for the groundkeeping and maintenance of our schools. I've mentioned the school-generated funds, uh, we match the expense to the uh increase in revenue. So it's a a net zero on our budget uh impact. And then we're looking at where the thirty-eight point six million increase uh budget to budget in terms of expenses is um allocated. So what are the reasons for the main reasons for for the the increase? And we're looking uh now between salary and benefits and non-salary expenses. So you'll see that of the thirty-eight point six million, twenty-two and a half are with regards to uh salary and benefits. Most of that, the first uh two lines are as a result of compensation increases and step increases. Um, and then uh we're looking at additional staffing changes, uh not all of these are permanent. You'll see in the next few slides, uh what uh additions budget to budget, uh we have um. Um, incorporated into the budget. The two point three million increases statutory benefits uh is another big item. And then there's some decreases here as we're looking at um factoring in expected teacher retirements. Um, which are at a higher grid uh step than uh a new, less experienced uh teacher. So it takes that into account and uh any turnover and leaves and vacancies through the year. So that is just based on experience and trend analysis.
Okay, uh, Heather has a question.
Thank you, uh, through you, uh, the decrease in WSIB, is that because we're safer? Or because they've given us a decrease in rate?
The decrease in WSIB, oh, sorry, that was me.
And Sorry's also joined, welcome. Go ahead.
Okay, the decrease in WSIB is provided from our actuaries, uh, based on experience and uh their analysis. Um, I'm not sure if school, you know, closures, remote working, if any of that was factored in. Uh, but every year they provide us with a letter, uh, well, a couple of letters, uh, one at the beginning and one throughout the the year. Where we capture at revised estimates, uh, any changes. Um, and we use the actuaries uh assumptions in order to determine if it's an increase or a decrease in our liability. In this case, positive for us, it was a decrease in liability which decreases our costs. Okay, I'm not sure if there was another hand I've heard.
No, it was uh, it was Sorry joining, it was the thing there, yeah.
Okay. From a uh non-salary perspective, uh, main changes are the bump up in the school generated funds. Uh, just uh expecting that increase in activity and field trips and perhaps excursions. And other um fundraising activities uh that may take place next year. Uh, that was another one of the common themes we've heard through the budget survey. That uh parents and students alike and potentially staff uh are looking at. Uh, the um reintroduction of co-curricular, extracurricular activities. Um, as part of enhancing learning and the learning experience. Uh, transportation and uh the school operations and maintenance that I've mentioned. So the portion that is non-salary or contractual, um, the indigenous indigenous um board action plan. Uh, is increasing by seven hundred thousand as a result of uh an increase in the actual allocations. On the on the um uh funding side and its envelope. Uh, for this particular um area and uh plan of action. And uh, um, there's a uh portion in terms of staffing. Um, and a portion in terms of the board action plan, non-staffing initiatives. That is still being uh developed and finalized by the committee. Um, and most of the other changes are uh the priorities and partnership fund. So this, the expense does match the reduction in revenue as well. Uh, so it's a net zero impact to the budget. And capital interest is uh lower every year as a result of paying more and more into the principal. And therefore having a lower uh balance outstanding. Um, the full-time equivalent of staff, we have included two measures, uh, two comparison comparables. One is to uh next year's budget to the revised estimates. And the other one is budget to budget, we're required to do a budget to budget comparison when we look at um. The financial statements and the budget cycle. Uh, however, we thought for staffing in particular was important to show the revised estimates. Because uh uh there were a lot of uh funding uh announcements for the year that we've captured. Uh, the revised but not a budget, and you'll note that there's, well, there's a significant increase over budget to budget. Um, we're pretty comparable to revised budget, so we were able to maintain about the same stuff. With uh a few uh increases here and there. So this is the instruction uh portion, which looks at students uh facing staff and school administration. Uh, the administration, uh, there's an increase there in staff, but that is a reallocation. Um, from the um link ESL program that was under other. Uh, that has uh been aligned with board administration, so it's not necessarily an increase uh in um. In staff, um, and the rest is a bit uh more so status quo. So what are we adding, key um positions to note that are added to the base budget? That means these are um. Permanent positions, and I I heard um.
I beeped.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm just um concerned, um, as I am every. I'm just um concerned um as I am every year about um. The the lack of an increase in EAs in our schools. Um when I talk with our principals and when I speak with teachers and EAs uh alike. They are always asking for more. And I know that we have budgetary constraints and I'm wondering if the lack of an increase in EAs is is driven by the budget. Um, because this is a significant need that we see every single year. It's it's an ask from our schools every year.
Um, it's certainly um. It's it's always been one of those areas that has. Um required in more assistance depending on the students that enter uh or that are already within our system. Uh year over year, if we look budget to budget, we do have an increase of uh twenty one point eight. Uh and over revised, we have six point eight additional ones, so there's some increase in the uh staffing. Um, however, most of them are one time and when the COVID support is not uh continued. Um, as well as the, some of them are funded through Support for Student Funding, which also is provided for a one-year. Uh bridge for uh twenty two, twenty three. Uh we're looking at a significant unfunded number of educational assistance and that's where we are concerned. That if the funding doesn't continue, uh we're probably looking at uh. I believe it's about forty nine unfunded positions within the EAs.
That's untenable. How how do we operate as a board that way? I I'm sorry, that's not a question for you to answer, it's a plundering of my own and it um I I'm very saddened by. What we're seeing in this budget in that area. Thanks.
Go ahead, no more questions right now.
Okay, so um as I've mentioned, uh I was looking at the base staffing, so these positions are are mostly uh permanent. Um with a, some of them uh also um uh being through uh. Funded as as one time through surplus, so we're looking at uh some additions to our base staffing. Um, that are most notably uh in the area of special education and mental health, so learning disabilities, support teacher. Behavior analyst, speech language pathologist, we're looking at nine self-contained classrooms. Uh between CPP and life skills between both panels, I believe that there's four and five that are being expected or estimated for next year. Um, two child and youth counselors and two social workers that are being added to the permanent complement. With the indigenous uh allocation uh increase in funding. Um, the um committee has put forward a request for one system principal to oversee this area for indigenous rights and education. Uh up to six uh additional indigenous instructional resource teachers. And uh two indigenous student support coordinators in addition to. Um, the board action plan uh increase uh that we've mentioned uh on the previous slide of seven hundred thousand. So we are we are quite excited about the additional staffing in all of these areas that we were a able to to add. A a research officer uh position for one years being um, I should say maintained because we do have that contractual position this year as well. Uh in order to support um. The uh data collection that uh further supports our action plan. Both for mental health and well-being, equity and inclusion areas uh of our multi-year uh and strategic priorities.
It's me, Tracy here. Um, I wonder if it's possible. If this slide is to be part of the presentation at the board as well. Um, to indicate which positions are part of. Enveloped funding for specific purposes.
Um, okay, um. I would say all of them, with the exception of research officer. Are enveloped within either special education, uh mental health and the indigenous um. Uh education allocation. And we certainly can add this slide as well.
Okay, thanks.
Additional positions that are one time and cover through COVID support. Um, we're looking at additional teachers in the elementary panel which includes the tutoring supports, the. Uh IRTs and LD reading support, there's two um learning disability reading supports and. Um, uh, I don't have the exact number that are elementary uh for the uh instructional resource teachers. And there's free numeracy um instructional resource teachers for secondary. And eight secondary teachers supporting the uh virtual schools. Uh one administrator for virtual school, twenty six educational assistants to uh Amy's previous question that are one time and supported through this COVID. Uh funding. Uh in order to maintain uh the same level as the current year. Um, there's an additional speech language pathologist that is a one-time, six child and youth counselors and additional two social workers. Uh and two caretaker positions. Uh and the balance of vocational teaching support in order to help assist with uh absenteeism and um. Staffing in schools for next year, so that is uh nine million fifty seven thousand is our allocation of COVID supports. From uh our reserves initiatives that we're continuing from, uh sorry, new initiatives into next year that are proposed. Our um right to read um training and resources, uh and this is more mandated than it is. Uh something that um is optional for us to do. Uh I am hopeful that for the year perhaps with the requirement to do this uh work. Uh there will be some additional funding. Um graduation coach, uh we've added a position uh through this um. Proposed new initiatives and for surplus and um. A move to electronic forms for schools which will save time both for our staff as well as for parents. So that's a total investment in new initiatives of four hundred and eighty five thousand. That are being proposed, so you may have seen the list in the prior years being quite significantly larger than what we have this year, we've really focused our. Um staffing to maintain the level we have currently that are student-facing and supporting student learning and student needs. Um, and uh very few new initiatives uh that uh we were able to. Fit within compliance and uh prioritized. In addition, there is continuing initiatives uh from this current year, so the structured learning class pilot is continuing into next year. Um, we do have some funding for additional mental health strategy initiatives and well-being, staff well-being. Uh and from our environmental sustainability pillar, we have a few uh continuing um. Initiatives for active and sustainable transportation. Uh eco-school projects and opportunities, which is again something that we've heard in the survey. Uh and that was uh one of the areas that resonated with the participants and continuing with the co-op student which helps. Uh facilitate a lot of data collection that supports our environmental sustainability uh plans. So tho- those uh amount four hundred and eighty one thousand. From a capital budget perspective, we are looking at a hundred and forty six point one million in spending, mostly for completing approved projects through capital. Um priorities funding for Milton eleven. Uh Rattlesnake Point, Milton twelve, Oakville number three, the New Oakville High School. Um as well as looking at the the education development charges, uh so purchasing a land for um these projects and. Uh new projects that have been approved under the recent capital uh priorities uh program that was announced. Um. And the work that is continuing through school renewal and school condition improvement that is uh going on in our older uh facilities. As well as the COVID resilience infrastructure funding that was received uh this year, so there's still um an additional amount of work to be completed on those projects. So everything is funded through ministry funding with the exception for Milton eleven. Uh addition that was uh approved by the ministry to be funded through a accumulated surplus that we have put aside. So this is a list of just the main uh construction projects for next year or uh land purchases. And um we're now moving into our financial position, so what does all this mean when we put together all the revenue? Increases and the the expense increases and the additions in staffing and non-staffing costs, uh we're looking at. Total revenue um including use of accumulated surplus of almost twelve million. Um and total expenses of a hundred and uh fifty four point five million. So this slide is uh important because it is this the compliance uh data that the ministry is looking for in terms of our accountability and regulatory compliance. Um and trustees have seen this before, we are looking from the middle of this table up, so the total accumulated, the gray. Uh area, the total accumulated in-year surplus for compliance is the number that we have to be under the one percent or the seven point five million, so. Our total use of uh surplus from compliance is seven point three million. Below that line are items that are outside compliance and they mainly refer to uh land, they refer to um. Committed capital from previous uh projects that are being amortized. Um and uh anything that we would have in terms of uh employee future um benefits. Uh so from an operating perspective, the seven point three million uh is divided between multi-year plan supports of two point three million. Committed capital that is still considered to be within um not ministry-funded uh. For almost three hundred thousand, we'll continue to draw that down. And uh four point eight million is at the on the top line for uh unappropriated. And a lot of that is explained in the next slide when we're looking at our deficit elimination plan and what has caused to have. Um, an unappropriated uh deficit in order to be able to support the system. Uh and the trustees will recall that we've set aside uh about three percent of our provincial allocation, about eighteen million dollars on the that top line. In order to assist us to navigate the challenges of the pandemic. So overall. We're looking at um how do we explain the seven point three million and is it uh a one-time deficit or or something that can be eliminated over two years? Or is it a structural deficit? And in arriving here, we had to make decisions as a senior team in terms of just how many staff we can add. To the permanent complement and how many staff will continue to be one time because we do have to have. An ele- a deficit elimination plan. And that was a hard discussion to have. Um, so this is what we propose to put forward to the ministry and trustees, uh by approving the the um. Budget will also have to approve the deficit elimination plan. Uh the reduction in tuition fees of two million, we are expecting that that is temporary in nature over the next couple of years and once everything stabilizes to regular. Um, levels, we will continue to uh receive those students back into our system. And uh that additional revenue will uh bounce back. Um, there's been increasing the supply costs due to COVID for the last couple of years uh that we are hoping. Um, that um. If they continue on one side over the next few years, uh there will be COVID support funding to assist us to complement that. Uh additional increase and if not, uh it may not be required, then the supply cost will also decrease. We have a million dollar contingency that we've put in a provision for that has no attached costs to this point. So therefore, of course, that is uh just a number we've put in there for an eight hundred and fifty five million budget, it is not a large contingency. Uh and I strongly suggest that we leave room for unexpected circumstances and therefore. Um, maintain that one million dollar uh contingency. Uh, the temporary staffing that we've added for surplus amount to seven hundred thousand uh as well as uh. Maintaining the tutoring uh supports, as I've mentioned, another six hundred thousand, so I adding uh temporary uh instructional resource teachers. Support learning recovery. Uh the new initiatives we talked about, both new initiatives as well as continuing initiatives for to support a multi-year plan. Uh are also timed investments. Uh, we do have a COVID-related um delivery costs for PPE. Uh and uh tests that we've maintained for next year as well and a software upgrade. Um for seventy thousand, which is a one-time as well. So looking at all these aspects, um we do not have a structural deficit. Um, however, we are looking uh and monitoring our international students as well as supply costs. Which are two big-ticket items on this uh deficit elimination plan. As a senior team, however, we um. Did not want to make a decision to um. Make permanent reductions in our staffing level as a growth board. Uh as a result of these two items which we consider to be temporary and to bounce back, so making a a decision to cut. Uh permanent um positions or resources. Um maybe short-sighted and we felt that this uh. This plan is uh appropriate considering the the circumstances. So I'm not sure if trustees have any questions uh with respect to what we're putting forward to the ministry and where we are in terms of the uh compliant but deficit budget.
Go ahead, Andrea.
So my my question is actually broader than that and um it is, I know that. Uh, you're on, you as superintendent of business services. Uh are part of a a group of superintendents of and executive officers or whatever other boards call. Um, is a compliant budget what we're really seeing across the province? And I'm wondering, are there any non-compliant budgets uh that are um? That some boards might be looking at and and um. I'm wondering, I mean, just wondering myself what how that reflects on on the money that's being uh put forward to our public education system, but um. Yes, so I so uh Roxana, are i- is this what a lot of boards are looking at right now? You know, through their budget processes.
Uh, I would say yes, um everyone is struggling to stay within compliance and there's absolutely a few boards. Um, that are not able to stay within compliance. I don't know anyone who's balanced, um I'm not saying that there aren't boards that are able to balance their budget. Um, I just have not, um certainly, I don't know where everyone will end up, but from the colleagues that we've spoken and. I am part of the executive council of um the superintendent of business, uh and we're meeting actually next week. And I had already sent in this question to be one that we will address as a big group as opposed to our fourteen members of the executive council that we. as opposed to our fourteen members of the executive council that we meet monthly with the ministry. But as far as I know, from those that are reaching out to me and those in the meetings, everyone is trying hard to stay within the one percent compliance. They have asked the ministry to increase compliance to two percent, which is something that we had this year. And that was not approved, except the ministry said to submit the plan to be over compliance for the ministry's approval, just as we would in a typical year. And depending on their circumstances, they may be able to go to two percent. I don't think that we have to do that. There's always some savings when we plan for eight hundred and fifty-five million dollars and we're looking at hundreds and hundreds of accounts. It is very difficult to say we will save five thousand here, three thousand there. But that over three hundred accounts can add up quite a bit. And at the end of the year, we always see, typically, we see that we end the year better than what we expected because of some of those savings and not the entire budget is being spent. Some are over, some are under, but overall, we cannot predict that. At this point in time, we're trying to be conservative to say, here's what we think we need. And we will make every effort to spend less. So that, I'm hoping that continues to be the case for this year as well and that we are not going to spend seven million out of our accumulated surplus. We cannot, we cannot spend seven million dollars every year from our surplus. This is only in the years when we need additional resources. I will, however, say that over the last two years, we've had savings because we've budgeted for a deficit. And then the ministry, through discussions with the trustee associations, with code, the education, directors of education, and through Cosbo, on the finance side, our association, we've kept them informed of the challenges we've had. And they've listened throughout the year and provided additional funding. And we've already had the expenses in because we knew what the system needed in order to be supported. And all that extra funding reduced our deficit position, as well as the school closures reduced quite a bit of our expenses as well. So even though our budgets were deficit for the last three years, we haven't actually spent at all. So we are mindful to see and make sure that we're in a strong financial position. We have quite a large accumulated surplus. And we want to make sure that long-term, we're in a position where we can have a compliant budget within one percent without being concerned that the following year, that won't be an option. So that's why it's important that it's not a structural deficit, that are one-time things that we can eliminate. Not to say that the one-time initiatives being eliminated don't have the same impact on the system. They will be detrimental to the system, especially, you know, we're looking at nine million dollars in COVID supports. Most of them are teaching staff, educational assistance. So that would certainly be a significant loss.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm also looking at the time. And it is a huge part of our role. So I'm wondering if we can spend just a little bit more. Roxanne, I think there's another little chunk to go here.
Yeah, I will. So I think we've gone through the main areas and I've already mentioned what are our pressures, which is here on this slide. So I won't spend time on it. You've seen it already in today's presentation. And then the year-end projections is the next portion. I wanted to spend a little bit of time to go over just that's the current year. So now we're changing gears. So we're done with the budget for next year. And we're looking at where do we expect to be next for this current year? Where do we expect to end the year? So if you're indulge me just a few minutes, I wanted to provide you an update to our enrollment projection as a result of March count date. So we are within forty-three point forty-three average daily enrollment of what we have projected at revised estimates. So that's pretty close. So not a little bit lower in both panels, but very, very close to what we have projected. With regards to revenue, revenue is down by one point nine million. And it's as a result of the lower projection. And also, I'm going to have to look at the details. The other, oops, other revenues. I think I'm going to ask Jay to remind me what we reduced there. And a little bit of a decrease in the investment income as a result of lower rates and cash.
Good evening, trustees. Yeah, I can just kind of touch on the couple of main components of the other fees and revenues that went down. So the two main ones, the first being a lower international student enrollment. So we did lose some since revised estimates. So that amounted to approximately two hundred thousand. And then the other big component is our rental revenue, where it was lower than what we projected at revised due to cancellations from shutdowns and whatnot and less activity from our third-party renters. So that was about eight hundred thousand. That makes the two, those two items make up the one million.
Thank you for that. And in terms of expenses, they two are down about one point nine million. So we're almost at the same point as to where we projected within about fifteen thousand dollars. And those are some savings within various areas as a result of vacancies not being filled, other positions that started later than what we were able to react to the new funding that was announced for the year. So overall, we are looking at a fifteen thousand dollar difference, so quite similar to where we projected. However, I would like to draw your attention that we are expecting savings. We've put in place long-term occasionals that are being used for learning recovery as well. And with the two point eight million dollars funding announced that can be used this year, a portion of that will be able to use to support the stuff we already put in place. And that will provide savings to how much we will be using from surplus. As well, year-end closings and savings within all those hundreds of GL accounts are going to potentially reserve some more savings so that we don't have to spend the eleven million dollars that we have put forward as part of our surplus contribution to current year, the current year budget. And I believe that was all we had for this evening. Any questions from trustees on the projection or on the budget?
It looks good, Roxana. Doesn't look like there's any more questions. I have a comment on it's slide three, but you don't have to go back into the presentation. It's the budget development process key dates. I think it would be really interesting to overlay when you get the information from the ministry or when it was received as key dates because I know it was a big announcement to say we're giving the GSNs the earliest they've ever been given. And yet, I think what you said at the start here was that just as of Friday, you got some of the information that needed to be plugged in. So it's, it's, it would just speak to the complexity of all of the information that you're receiving at a number of intervals across the way to try and pull it together. But.
Yes, thank you for that. And yeah, the announcement is one thing in the release of the forms and the technical paper that give us the explanation of how certain things are being calculated or supposed to be reported. Did not occur until the end of March. So they were a good five, six weeks apart. And we also need March thirty-first to pass in order to have enrollment projections for staffing, for programming, for locations. So it's very difficult to put everything together in a short amount of time. The other thing I can tell you is that a lot of school boards have not gotten to this point. They don't have a draft budget. They're still working through various portions of it. And it's been a big challenge for us to finish it for this meeting. And there may be, we still have to do a very thorough review of everything before our June first meeting.
Thank you. And there are no other questions. I have one more, and that is previously, we've seen indications of where Halton falls with respect to per pupil funding. And I just wonder if that data is also somewhere, somewhere known. It all kind of helps to contextualize all of this that's going on and also how we are, aren't able to respond to the numerous requests that we heard during the survey. Although I heard you say that we have responded to a number of them, which is great. And this year, we're also the inflationary pressures piece. A dollar last year is worth a different amount than it is this year. And I think that's just another interesting overlay here.
Thank you for that. And we have done that analysis again. I think Jay may have that at his fingertips. We do continue to be one of the lowest-funded per pupil. In the same context, we also don't have all the challenges that the more rural board would have with distant schools and smaller populations. However, we do have quite a few challenges and areas that, as you've seen tonight, we're underfunded for.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no other questions, then this will be coming to board next time in June. And so I would just encourage trustees, if anything comes up in your reflection on the presentation, just to get in touch. So either information can be ready or additional information or whatever the case may be. So we can move through closer to a billion-dollar budget in an efficient way. All right, so we're at eight o'clock. We've been at it for two hours just by, I guess, a show of, yes, Roxanna, go ahead. You're waving.
Right, wrong button.
No worries.
Enjoy your evening.
To yourself and your staff for all of the work that brought you here today and for preparing the presentation and providing responses to all of the questions. Thank you. Thanks, Jay and Jackie as well. Okay, trustees, we do have another staff-focused piece. I'm wondering if you want to have a break now or if we can wait till after that piece to get up and take a stretch? Go ahead, Amy.
I'm just concerned, we seem to constantly run out of time. And I know that these are important pieces that we have ahead. But if we can make our breaks short, because there's still a lot of work ahead of us. And I don't want to find that we're pinched up against the clock again, like we have been in the past.
Sounds good. Thank you for that. So can we wait until after the staff piece, then just take a quick stretch and come back to it? Or does anybody prefer to go now? I don't want to spend more time debating now or then. Jean, yep, you're good to wait?
Good to go now.
Now? Okay, so it's eight oh three. If people could be back by eight oh eight, it's five minutes. And then we'll hear the staff piece and move into the trustee-focused business. Okay, five minutes. See you. Hi, everybody. Welcome back. Just waiting for the clock to. Everybody, welcome back. Just waiting for the clock to change over. And so almost eight oh eight. It is eight oh eight. Okay, so Director Ennis, we have under item three point three, the administrative procedures, the administrative policies and procedures update, and there are four of those.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to Ian and Sari.
Thanks. Good evening. I'm gonna start off with my apologies. Just, we did a thorough review of this accessibility standard for customer service and aligns great with the regulation for twenty nine oh seven. Unfortunately, I missed that it was repealed back in twenty sixteen and replaced with the integrated accessibility standards. And with that, there's some slight language changes. So I'd like to just pull this from the agenda and we'll bring it back after we've had a chance to clean up the language with the new integrated standard.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much. Are there any questions on that? Okay, so we'll look forward to seeing that one come back again. And, sorry, go ahead. And Allison, hello and welcome. Nice to see you.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. Hi, Tracy. I'm going to pass it over to General Manager Apolito to speak to the Disconnecting From Work AP. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm going to speak to the Disconnecting From Work AP, which is a brand new administrative procedure for the board. It was really born from legislation. There were new requirements added to the Employment Standards Act in January of this year, which required that all employers with twenty four, twenty five or more employees must have a written procedure in place by June second. And the intent of disconnecting from work and the procedure is really about not engaging in work-related activities outside of the regular scheduled workday. It really sets a tone and encourages that work-life balance in employees' lives. It applies to all of the employees in the board, management alike. There were very few parameters in the legislation in terms of what was required in the procedure itself. It does take into account operational needs of the system and the board and times where responses or work is required outside of those regular hours for emergencies. And you can see in paragraph two what those might be. And as a due diligence, it was reviewed by legal to ensure alignment and obligations were met as well. So unless Sari wants to add anything additional, we'd be happy to take questions.
Yeah, just a couple additional things to trustees. As Alison pointed out, the the legislation, the Working for Workers Act, which amended the Employment Standards Act, which compelled employers to to develop this policy, did not have any positive requirements to include in that policy. So it's a little bit vague at this point in terms of what it is that the legislation requires us to do. And it also, the legislation does not expressly give workers the right to disconnect from work in the literal sense. So while you, there's a policy that seeks to strike work-life balance, and it's a good thing. It's a good legisla-, it's a good health and wellness framework. The legislative framework is is yet to be tested. So again, while there is a right to disconnect from work, it's it's not expressly written in legislation, which is kind of the the difficulty here. And and obviously, this will be tested in courts, perhaps, if if someone, you know, if an organization disciplines an employee, for example, for failing to respond to an email or to a crisis. So we'll see how it goes. You'll see also under the review date that it's set to be reviewed again in a relatively, relatively short order. I think it's February of twenty twenty three, and that's an indication that it's it's more or less work in progress. I want to thank Alison and a couple of other individuals in our department who've worked very hard on this. And we're happy to take questions if you have any. And one last thing, it's it's, as per legislation, it's supposed to be published June second.
Thank you. Okay, Jean, go ahead.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Allison, and sorry for presenting this tonight. I have two quick questions. One would be, was there union involvement in the creation of this document? And if not, I'm wondering what their responses are. But secondly, in numbers six, seven, and eight, under working hours, it's referred to as, let's see, let's see here, normal, normal working hours. And normal is a very interesting term in this day and age. And I'm wondering if that's a term that might be better transplanted with the word traditional or something than normal? No one really knows what normal is anymore, I think. So this is just a thought. But anyway, I'd be curious about my first question. Thank you.
I can answer that, sorry. There have been discussions about this. I know that the federations are eager to to take a look at this, and it's something that will be shared following this meeting with them.
That's great. Thank you very much. And I want to commend you for making this document as flexible as it could be. I look at this and I think of the little character Gumby, how it stretches and bends and moves. And it's a very flexible document, and I think it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I have one. In that, some meetings are called out under a subheading. So I'm imagining board meetings are still okay as they are, or, okay. And other meetings like CAC and so on. My question is about extracurriculars, which often take place outside of normal working hours. Or would those be considered within working hours? I believe in the premise of this and disconnecting with devices, it's almost impossible sometimes. But I do wonder about whether it's still encouraging people to be involved in their school communities if that is a passion that they want to follow.
Go ahead, Alison.
Yes, of course. There's there's no prohibition whatsoever on conducting the work where it's necessary or wanted. And that's kind of the intent of why it is made flexibly. It's really meant to, you know, if in an individual, excuse me, is outside of their normal working hours, and it's about respecting that time that they have outside of work if they so choose.
Yeah, and if I may add, extracurricular activities, obviously, the instructional day is set out in legislation, the Education Act and other sources. You know, extracurricular activities are more or less considered voluntary. So it's, you know, it's, the AP or the legislation is not, is not meant in any way to sort of wreck barriers to those kinds of things. So it does, it does consider and contemplate that there are circumstances where meetings have to occur after hours, such as board meetings or, you know, special events. So it's it's contextual in nature. It's really to address, you know, you know, an over enthusiastic employee or client or supervisor who on the weekends, for example, insists on sending emails and receiving responses and those kinds of things. So, which overall, we do a good job of respecting work-life balance. But we'll, we'll see. It'll be tested to see what this AP does as far as our work habits and our, you know, mindset in terms of working after hours or on weekends.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to move on to the next one?
Yeah, the next one is our Automated External Defibrillators AP. And it's, there are no substantive changes to the AP. It's been reviewed, and what's set out in that AP is still applicable today. The AP is essentially a document that outlines a program, the AED program, that's in partnership with the Hallton Public Health and the Hallton region in terms of the maintenance and the accessibility of the AED devices in schools that are available in the event of an emergency. So not much by way of changes, other than some housekeeping edits. Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead, Joanna.
Yeah, thank you. Can you please tell us where these AED devices are located? Like, does every school have one? Thank you.
Yeah, they're available in all of our schools, and there should be signage in all of our schools. And a document that's maintained at the school that identifies who are the first aiders in the school. So there are three first aiders in every secondary school, two in every elementary school, which exceeds legislative requirements. And those AED devices that are inspected annually for, in terms of their, you know, operational status, that they're in good status, their batteries. They're also signed off by our Health and Safety Department. And again, there are signage in every school as to where they are. And any visitor or any individual who is in the school can ask the office, for example, as to where those AEDs are. For instance, at JWS, at the JWS Singleton Center, you'll see, you'll see, you know, when you first walk in, there's a sign right in the sightlines of the visitor that you will see the AED. And it's encased in a, in a glass case. So they're easily visible to those who need to know where they are.
And follow up, do you do a periodic assessment, I guess, or audit of the signage, whether that's visible and whether the information is updated? And I'm thinking also about evening use, you know, if there is a school event or council meeting and the regular staff who typically, you know, would know where to find things and who to talk to are not present. Is the signage obvious enough and is the device accessible and visible enough?
So.
Do a periodic audit to make sure that's in place?
We haven't done periodic audits per se. We do, we do, we do do the annual inspections. I wouldn't call them audits. But that's a good, good suggestion that you raise, Joanna. The inspections essentially ensure that they're good operating status, that the signage is where it needs to be, and the first-aider training, which is done every three years, is up to date. Now, in the event that you're saying an individual who is the designated first-aider at the school is is not available, usually, and I will certainly check with our Health and Safety Department, the administrator on site is typically one of the first aiders. But there should be a contingency plan in the school in the event of an emergency. And, you know, if all fails, you call nine one one. But those are two things I'll certainly follow up on operationally.
Okay, thank you. Can I just ask, bring the last two items together? In this one, it says, training is two point five hours in length and must be scheduled after school hours. So looking back to the other AP about disconnecting from work, are there times, is there sufficient flexibility in there that people could be required to attend training after work hours?
You know, even though the AP expressly says that training is done after school, I'm aware of, you know, training that occurred during the instructional time to the extent that we're able to get release time. So to your question, Tracy, I'm certain that the flexibility exists, depending on who the first aiders are, that the training could occur during the instructional day or during the workday. But I can also follow up on that also specifically in 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 relation to the disconnect from work or the spirit of that, as you pointed out.
Yeah, because they're, yes. Okay, thank you. There are no other questions on this one. So now the Health and Safety Policy.
Thank you, Tracy. So the Health and Safety Policy is before you, is our first draft, our first iteration of this document. As you are aware, our Board of Trustees passed a motion, I believe, a couple of months ago, or I believe in March it was, where staff were instructed to develop a companion policy that speaks to our health and safety commitment, given that we have quite the impressive number of Health and Safety Administrator Procedures that speak to the health and safety of staff and students. The policy or the draft document follows, you know, the the policy governance framework that the Board of Trustees have set out. So this document should speak to the, to the what and the why, while our APs speak to the how. You'll see in its structure that it's, it mirrors, you know, the the format of other board policies where it speaks to principles and the guiding ethos that govern this policy and the APs that engage this policy. We've also defined a few terms in that, in that document in terms of what physical safety is, what physical well-being is, psychological health and well-being. As we've discussed with our trustees, with trustees, that this policy will speak to not only the physical health and safety of staff and students, but also to the psychological health and well-being of staff and students. So this is our first attempt to capture the board's commitment to, you know, creating a learning environment, a working environment that's safe physically and psychologically for our staff and students. And, you know, when I said, you know, the why, obviously, the importance of health and safety physically and psychologically to student achievement and well-being and to staff achievement and well-being. And obviously, we have a legislative responsibility and an obligation to do this. And also, it enshrines our commitment to those things and to the fact that we will be implementing programs and interventions that champion health and safety, physical and psychological, and that ensures that health and safety is part of our everyday thinking, everyday life. So that's what we bring before you for your consideration and review, and we welcome your feedback and edits. I understand that this will come to board for two, two visits before it passes as a, as a policy. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tanya.
Yep, thank you. Thanks so much for creating this. I'm glad now that there's an umbrella policy to, to cover off all of our procedures. Question for you, and I guess, and maybe you can point me in the right direction. Seeing as how we've, we've been going through a pandemic for the last two years, and there's still pandemic-related safety protocols in place. Where do we reference or or point out that we look to public health for direction? That the onus is not on trustees to make those health decisions, but that we look to public experts?
Thank you, Tanya. I don't believe we've expressly written that statement in that policy. I do know it exists in many of our APs as it relates to managing, you know, mandatory vaccinations, for example, or anaphylaxis, or any of those prevalent medical conditions for our students or staff. It's expressly written in those AP that much of what guides our practices and how we manage the response to these medical conditions is set up by public health. I don't believe the policy speaks to that. We can certainly embed, embed it into the policy. I, I see a place for it. So that's something that we can take, take back and amend to the policy.
Sorry, can I follow up? Yeah, so on that same note, I completely understand the the other procedures out there with anaphylaxis and the myriad of things that happen in schools. And I think this is more top of mind because we're currently living in a pandemic. We never really had to come up with a procedure. And I know that we've been questioned repeatedly over the past two years as to how we came up with our decisions specifically related to the pandemic. So I don't know if it can be included in this policy, but as long as we can point out to the public where it is that we are going to for guidance, that would be great. Thank you. guidance, uh that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. I I can see a place for it under principles that, you know, a- as it relates to managing broader public health um and safety issues, we are partners and we're guided by by public health and other other health agencies. So I can see and, you know, sitting neatly in that in that section. No problem.
Thank you. Go ahead, Joanna.
Yeah, I'm just um just wanted to verify if your definitions of the health-related terms come from Occupational Health and Safety Act or so are are they specifically related to occupational health and safety?
Yeah, they're they're more driven from an occupational health and safety uh legislation and terminology, not necessarily in the act per se, but the language used in health and health and safety departments, occupational health and safety functions of an organization. Um so, you know, the the terms hazards, the terms harm, injury are all terms rooted in the Occupational Health and Safety Act. So uh they're not explicitly spelled out in the Occupational Health and Safety Act or regulation, but they they mirror or borrow from the uh from the act.
Okay, just follow up because when I uh look at psychological safety, I know there are different definitions of that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention that um, you know, perhaps that's the difference, is that the occupational piece versus um you know, more of a psychological health type of piece, right?
Yeah, it's more of an occupational than a clinical sort of definition uh whi- which which probably more appropriate for our setting uh in our view.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, seeing no other, I have a quick one here. Under principles, uh the last one on the first page mentions all members of the board's community. And then in the ne- on the next page, the last one says, this policy applies to all employees, students, volunteers, visitors, and trustees. So I just wonder about defining community somewhere or somehow, or even stepping away from that topic because one could also think our community is everybody who supports the public system and who may enter into s- anyway. I just worry about the broadness of that term and from a risk management perspective.
No, that's fair. Thank you. Uh duly noted. We'll we'll ensure that the terminology is uh terminology is consistent. The community is uh, you know, is a very loose and broad term, so we will certainly um tighten it up. Thank you.
Alrighty, uh so seeing no other people on the list at this point in time. And speaking of the list, that brings us to the end of the policies and procedures. Thank you for bringing them here for an advanced uh conversation. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
So we'll see everybody.
Good night.
These coming up at the board meeting then in the near future. Have a great night if you don't stay. Okay, the next chunk of the agenda is um more focused on trustee uh business uh in terms of standing committees uh in subcommittee work and O P S P. Uh so, uh we'll get right into that then. Um understanding committees, three point four point one. I don't believe the board self-assessment uh committee has a report at this point in time. Um I would ask board or trustee professional development group, is there anything at this time?
We did the bulk of our work at the beginning of twenty twenty-two um in an effort to make sure that everyone had the training they needed in order to get through the remainder of the term. Um I don't think we'll be planning anything further for this year. Um and we will swing into action again um when the new board, when the new board uh comes into um being.
Okay.
So yeah, nothing on on that uh at this point.
Okay. I don't want to delay the next one. I have a training question. We can do it under other business, though, if we have time. Um so then we're going into the governance uh piece. Over to you and Tanya to guide the group through the different things. And I'm here to help if you need anything.
Yeah, um I hope nobody uh minds if we go a little bit out of order. Um I wanted to start with something that should be simple before doing something that might be a little bit more meaty and then end with something simple again. So what I wanted to do was remind trustees of the motion that was passed on, um I think it was uh the second meeting in March to um create a trustee operations policy and election of chair and vice chair governance procedure. And so what we'd like to bring forward today is um our draft of what that policy might look like. And it is uh found in your folder. I hope um everyone was able to access it. Um I didn't realize that just putting it in the folder might not be enough. Uh so I'm I'm hoping that everyone was able to access it um. And and if you're not, please let me know. Uh it's a very straightforward policy. Basically, um the the purpose of the policy is to provide a framework for governance procedures that pertain to the operational role of the board of trustees. And there are three areas in which we have an operational role that is in the policy statement. One is the number of trustees. The board shall have the number of trustees determined by the trustee determination and distribution report that is approved by the board every four years prior to municipal elections. Should a trustee no longer be able to serve, the board will ensure a procedure is in place to appoint a trustee to serve that constituency as soon as is practical. So um coming out of that, we will require that all of the notes that were taken um during the last few years on how to replace a trustee will be put into a governance procedure so that we will be able to support our work um should that instance arise um with ease and without having to search for how did we do this last time. The second is the director. The board shall ensure there is a director. And should the director no longer be able to serve, the board will ensure a procedure is in place to hire a director as soon as is practical. And as you know, we've uh we've collected notes on this in the in the past uh couple of rounds. And so we will be um putting together a governance procedure regarding that. The last item is regarding the election of, yes.
Pardon me.
Yes.
It has a question that I think was on the last topic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the beep. Go ahead.
Yeah, um just uh with regards to the um should there be a a trustee that um uh needs to be replaced because they vacated or whatever? Um does, have we checked with, are are we gonna check with staff to see if they have any kind of procedure uh that that they have used um in the past or supported trustees in the past with?
Uh actually, yes, we have all of the materials from the last two times. And we've gathered it all together, including press releases and um this the the whole process. We've got all of it um in a big bundle. Yeah, just need to organize it and uh put it into a governance procedure. Because there are two ways of replacing a trustee. One is through election and the other one is through appointment. And so we need, we need to provide details of both processes um and uh and uh make sure that it's all properly aligned.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh Donna. Donna? You're muted, huh? I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
It's showing not muted, but we can hear you, yeah.
Sorry, Donna. Were there any other questions about that part? Okay, uh I'll just go back to the um document itself. And the the last one is the election of the chair and vice chair, which has been residing in our bylaws. And um we have removed all other procedural documents from our bylaws and turned them into governance procedures except for this one. So um this is the one I'll be bringing forward for you guys to look at this evening. Um and uh it's basically a copy and paste of the one that was in the bylaw. Um so it shouldn't be too difficult. The only change is that we no longer refer to a ballot box because we traditionally haven't been using a ballot box. We've been using all kinds of different containers for the director to pull names from the hat or from a jar or from a glass. But we've never used a ballot box, so we we took that phrasing out of it so that it wouldn't be so restrictive on the um methodology used by the director. They could use a randomizer on their phone and and that would work just as well. So we removed the the referral to the ballot box from that one. Um so this is a very straightforward policy. It speaks to the three areas of um trustee responsibility regarding operations. Donna, you're gonna try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I feel like that old commercial. Can you hear me now? Um I was just gonna point out on the two point one point two that we have a procedure in place to appoint a trustee. Um I'm wondering if you want to relook at that wording because under under the um legislation, we may not necessarily appoint a trustee. I believe the legislation says if there's less than three months before an election, no trustee would be appointed. And the way this is worded indicates that 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 is a definite that we would be appointing. So I'm just more wondering a little bit about the wording there. I'm not, I think this looks really good.
Okay, so yeah, I will massage the the language there so that um it's in line with the legislation. That's fine. Are there any other questions about that one? I'm I'm hoping that it's pretty straightforward. Okay, I'm not seeing, I'm not hearing anything. Um uh Tracy.
Sorry about that. Um I was just wondering now in terms of our flow that we're getting, what are the next steps? Are the next steps to come to board and ask for a legal review uh or or what? How?
Yeah, we we would send this to legal so that it has the proper uh references to the ad act in it um for definite. Um so yeah, that would be the next step. And then when it comes back from legal, if there are no substantive changes, we would bring it forward for approval.
Okay, are we, are you, does that mean it's gonna be in the next board package seeking to send it?
That that's that's the plan, yeah. As as long as no one has any glaring concerns other than what's been mentioned.
Sounds like that's good to go. Yeah.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. So now if we, if we look at the governance procedure for the election of the chair and vice chair, um I hope you've all been able to see that one. You'll see it's pretty much a copy and paste from what was in our bylaws. And I'm not gonna read through it because we're familiar with that process. So I'm I'm wondering if people can just uh put their hands up if they have a question because it's um it's pretty straightforward. We've we've used this process for several years, so.
Sorry, I missed it. Which one are we on? Just a point of order?
The the chair and vice chair election.
I know we've been around this block, and if we were in person, somebody might give me a a kick for raising this. But it's we um, in the event of a tie, that it will be broken by drawing the name out of the hat. And.
Did you, did you see that there's been a change there?
No.
Yeah, there's it, we do one more round. We give people the the opportunity for a sober second thought about whether or not they are interested in running. And um so it does, it does um give trustees one more opportunity to um decide whether or not they want to run. Oh, you're talking about the other one, about the drawing the name from the hat. We added something in there as well, too, did we not, Tanya?
I I don't think we did. I think it was um, we thought we would bring it up for discussion.
Okay.
Cuz we didn't, we didn't have a solution.
We actually didn't have a solution. You're right. We we couldn't think of a a better way of doing it. So if anyone has an idea, please bring it forward. Andrea.
Uh I was just thinking that perhaps an opportunity to speak further um to clarify position or something like that because uh it doesn't um there's not that opportunity in there. I don't know how people think about what, you know, what people think about that. I know it uh eats at more time, but it may provide some further clarification in people's minds.
Thinking perhaps to put in opportunity for trustees to ask questions of the candidates instead of um asking for the candidates to make another speech?
Um that might be good, though I would have a time limit on it.
Absolutely, yeah, okay. Um are there any thoughts about that idea? And Tracy, you have your hand up, so go ahead.
I think, I think that's great. And I was just gonna say, I believe if my memory serves me correctly, that the student trustees in their um recent procedure that we saw uh moved away from the drawing out of the hat and they had some suggestions in there as well, which I think are kind of like this. So yeah, if it's time-bound, uh I'm good with it, although I'm not such a time-bound person myself cuz I think it's a really important decision.
How about instead of making it time-bound, make it one question per trustee? That way, every trustee gets to speak.
If they want to.
If they want to, yeah.
I would just be grateful for any other way to decide this than a draw it out of a hat.
Absolutely, I hear you. Tanya?
Um I I like the idea of trying to break the tie democratically, but that still won't solve the issue in case people don't change their mind. So ultimately, it doesn't matter how many speeches, how many questions, there still has to be a way to determine who the who the winner or who the vice chair or chair or vice chair will be for the year.
Yeah, I I I agree. I would agree with you in principle, but giving people that one more opportunity to find something that that can maybe change a a a single mind so that there's no longer a tie. Um I think that's worth exploring. And it it would tie would only ever happen if there were an uneven number of trustees present. So, yeah. Tracy, go ahead. You're muted, Tracy.
Okay, I'm I'm sorry here. I just wonder if um our new wonderful governance resource staff person has seen any other practices out there at cities or or wherever? And whether with your indulgence, you would, we could ask that question there, Amy.
Sure, go ahead. Yes, please, Jean, ch- chime in.
Hi, thank you for the question uh through you, Vice Chair. The drawing of names from a hat is um in my experience has happened uh for the appointment where uh ties do happen and can't be broken. Um so that is not uncommon uh practice in in my experience. Uh I've also seen the case where uh if there are uh multiple ties, for example, and there are multiple candidates. Um this isn't the case where uh, for example, there's no interest. Um but where there are multiple uh draws, then the vote is cast in kind of the lowest, the lowest number of votes would be uh taken off and then repeat until you have one clear winner. Um if that answers some of your questions.
That's, that is actually exactly what we do. Um if there are multiple candidates, the lowest one drops off at each um vote until there's a clear winner. Yeah. I'm glad that, I'm glad we're not alone in that. Are there any other questions about this? Would anyone object to this being brought to board with the changes that have been suggested? Thank you very much. I appreciate this very much. And so I'm gonna ask Tanya to take on the committee's part. Thank you very much. I appreciate this very much. And so I'm gonna ask Tanya to take on the committee's part.
Okay, so next up, um, the, there was an option that was brought up earlier this year, either January or February, and that was to review the committee's policy. And if you recall, the reason why it's up for review, it's on its three-year cycle. And also because it's still one of those old poly proc things that we had um, out there, which meant it was both a policy and a procedure. So what we did is we split it out into two documents, uh, the policy and the procedure. Uh, the policy, if everyone wants to take a quick look at it, this might be the easier thing to to get through today. What we did, and I want to thank Amy and Andrea for working on this uh, on these two pieces. They were part of the committee that looked at this, uh, and as well as Marco. The policy itself is we've we've renamed it. It's called committees and appointments to also reflect the appointments of trustees to other organizations, for example, OPSA. Um, so that that covers it here. Um, we've um, really, we've simplified a lot of the wording. But pretty much, it's it's all the same. What you will notice here is the other trustee appointments on page two. Uh, but otherwise, uh, not much of the policy changed. Where you'll see most of the changes is in the governance procedure, which we'll get to. Uh, but before we go on to the governance procedure, if there are any questions on the policy itself. Go ahead and raise your hand. Uh, Jean? Jean, can you, did you have a question?
Yes, uh, sorry, thank you. I just opened up that policy and I saw there was two grammatical things and and just checked them off and and hit them. So I'm I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't have done that, but uh, I got carried away. Sorry, thank you.
No, we appreciate it. Thank you. The more eyes, the better. Okay, so if there are no other comments, um, the document is here if you wish to continue looking at it. Uh, the next document will be, and ideally, we'd like to present both the policy and the governance procedure together. Only because they're currently in a together format, and if we're gonna separate them, we'd like to present them for the first time together at the next board meeting. And of course, um, I will preface it by saying that we will have a legal review it before it becomes uh, you know, before it gets published. Um, okay, so the next document is the proposed um, governance procedures. Uh, document, you all have access. Um, we've kept the name the same, well, the same as the policy, committees and appointments. What we've done is we've really stream, well, we say streamline, but there's actually a lot of stuff in here. It was kind of like an amalgamation of everything that lives in different places. Everything's gonna live here. So at a very high level, if you go to the very last page, um, there are six um, points there. And it's really a high level of what we did. So, you know, general housekeeping, grammar, uh, simplification, language, whatnot. Uh, we also added an appointments section, uh, to differentiate between committees and commitments. Again, that speaks to, as an example, OPSA commitments. A big thing you'll notice is all of the committee of the whole items that used to reside in the bylaws have transferred here, because the committee of the whole is a committee. Therefore, it should live in the committee's uh, policy and governance procedure. So you'll see everything related to committee of the whole here. We added a section called working groups, and once we get to that section, we'll go into detail as to what that is, because it is a new term. Um, we've also added the striking committee report template. That way, it was a, that way, it could serve as a high-level uh, reporting tool every new term when we're trying to decide who is going to be named what committee and what type of a committee it is. So a template has been created. And um, we've also added all of the different standing committees' terms of references into this one document. When we started working on this document, we had OPSA, and since then, we've added um, professional development. I I'm trying a blank, governance committee, and um, board self-assessment. All the terms of references are here in one easy-to-find uh, place. Now, what you'll notice if we go to, um, let's just see. Just trying to find the section that talks to uh, working groups.
That's on page eight.
Oh, thank you so much, Andrea. So working groups. So, um, when it comes to statutory committees, um, for example, PIC, CAC. Those meetings are, um, they're they're not televised, but they are available to the public. They're recorded. And um statutory, uh, sorry. I'm I'm having a little brain meltdown here. Committee, sorry, there's working committee. Okay, so uh, standing committees. So if we're having a committee, um oh, actually, you know what I'll do, is I'll give you the governance committee as an example. So the members of the governance committee, same as the members of the board self-assessment committee. You do meet um, off camera to go over paperwork, go over ideas, put things together. And those meetings are not available to the public because they're working meetings. But technically, you are the committee. And um, the ADACT does say that if these committees should be available to the public. So in order to get around all of those working groups being available to the public, we created a section called working groups, so that trustees can work uh, behind the scenes, creating these documents. And you would be available to the public at committee of the whole, such as tonight, when the standing committee presents their work. So thus, thus was the creation of the term working group. So that that's uh, that's new here. What we've also included in the document are the um, agenda templates for both committee of the whole private session and committee of the whole public session. So they're available here for you to review. And let's see what else is in here. Striking committee and terms of reference. Yeah, I did make a note that I did want to discuss an item with you. And my mouse isn't cooperating. Ah, okay. Actually, no, there wasn't anything that I needed to discuss as a group to get consensus on. So if um, I'm gonna look to Amy. Amy, did I capture everything? Because I know this has been, it's been a few months now that we've worked on this. Or Andrea, if you want to add anything, because I know you were part of this committee. Did I capture the essence of the changes, or is there anything?
Yeah, I I think in broad strokes, absolutely. Um, the the one piece that I noted um, was um where is it? I thought I saw somebody asked a question. Oh, I see it was answered. Yeah, um, if no one has any questions, then I think I'm I'm happy with how you presented it.
Okay. Okay, I see a hand up. So I think, uh, Leah?
Uh, yes, thanks so much. Lots of great work done here by the group. Um, my question is about, uh, actually, it's probably just a reminder. How, what was the date that um, boards are required to uh, include a section in our agenda for public questions? I believe there was some legislation around a timeline as to how long we provide that. Something in my mind says November, um, and this was to accommodate the virtual meeting um, format. Uh, and I'm just wondering whether um, this is something that you're um, you know, this 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 um, recommendation to have the public question format is going forward beyond that? Or is this just in keeping with the timeline of the current recommendation by the ministry to offer this opportunity for the public to engage while we're using virtual meetings?
That's a great question, Leah. Um, I'm not sure. We, we didn't look at legislation insofar as public questions go, because it we currently offer it. I'll defer to Amy, because she put her hand up. She may have an answer.
I I don't think that there was a termination date for having um, committee meetings and pub and and other meetings public. I don't think there was a a termination date for that requirement. And as regards to um, Q and A, I don't, I also don't think there was um, a termination date for that either. I think the Ford government put that forward in an effort to create greater transparency. Um, I don't think that was a COVID measure.
Okay, well, I think we should look into it, because I was pretty sure it was when we incorporated it into our other, our other groups, like um, audit. So um, maybe what I'll do is I'll just do a little digging um, and try and find that um, that piece. It's out of, I'm I'm asking out of interest, but I also believe that um, it was a temporary measure.
Yeah, I'm I'm curious, though, um, even if if it does have an end date, do we want to remove it? Is, doesn't it serve a purpose? I, maybe that's something we should chat about here for a few minutes. How do people feel about the Q and A on the agenda? We used to have a Q and A many years ago, and um, it was removed because we went through a difficult time and the Q and A became contentious. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't have it. If if the board is um, doing something that people find to be contentious, we shouldn't be quelling the voice, I don't think. And um, there's that. And then there's the question about whether or not our committee meeting should be public. I I, again, I don't think we're, we have anything to hide, so is that something that we actually would stop doing just because the date that it's required came to an end? Does anyone have any thoughts about that? No? Okay. I'll I'll give it back to you, Tanya. Heather has her hand up.
Yeah, so I'll just answer it. I think uh, I'll put my pretend I'm not on the committee hat on. Um, I personally like having that time for public questions, because it allows engagement with the public. I know we always encourage uh, the public to contact their trustee. But sometimes things are of the essence and a broader issue. So I think offering um, the public an opportunity to engage with this, not just online, but, you know, when we return to the boardroom, um, members in the gallery having a dedicated time to ask questions. So it just adds that extra level of transparency. Heather?
Thank you. I have two little questions. First is on page one. Is it legislated? We're talking about second last paragraph, about resigning. I'm a little uncomfortable. If it's not legislated, I'm not sure if it is or not, so you can answer that. If they're absent for more than three consecutive meetings, yeah, I get that. They assume they're assumed to be resigned. Or from more than three meetings in a 12-month period. That one seems to me, that piece, seems a little harsh, uh, especially sitting on a committee like CAC. Somebody could get sick and and have to have surgery and, you know, maybe be off for a couple of months. And then, you know, right near the end of the term, or close to the end of the term, needs to be off, or is traveling, or whatever. I don't know. I just feel that that if it's legislated, we have to keep that, but if not, I think that's a little harsh. The other question I have is on page six. Scrolling down so I can see it. Talks about um, committee of the whole. Talks, where is the meetings? Somewhere where it says we meet twice a month or something.
I know what you're referring to. So committee of the whole, there's two, there's two parts to committee of the whole. There's committee.
Looking at page seven, sorry. Go ahead.
So there's committee of the whole, like tonight, which is a public session.
Yes.
And then there's committee of the whole, which is the board meeting that's private. Where Tracy is the vice chair of the meeting between six and nine.
Okay.
Committee of the whole, private session. So that's what the committee of the whole meets, two times per month, first and third Wednesday. It's the private session.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I I wasn't uh, really.
We do need to correct where it says the same thing under public, though, Tanya. I just looked. It says the same thing under public, so we need to correct that.
And what about my first question?
I've put a note in there to figure out if it is legislated. We we didn't, um, the committee didn't change any of that wording. It's wording that exists today.
Okay.
Um, so I I don't know if it's legislated or not, but I've um, I've highlighted it and we'll take a look. And if it is legislated, we'll leave it as is. If it's not, then we can always come back to the board for for thoughts. Go ahead, Andrea.
Um, this goes actually back to the public questions item. And that was put in there due to the legislation. But and it was specifically for remote access for people. So it's interesting that the concept now is also potentially questions from the gallery. Just putting that out there.
So I think back to Amy's question, is it something as a board we'd like to continue to offer, or?
Well, we have to continue to offer it at this point on the remote part, because we actually have, uh, it's part of our remote meetings policy or something. Um, it's something legislated. Uh, and I'm not sure if it has a sunset clause in it at this point, or if we're just waiting for the um, the ministry to no, there's a sunset clause in it. I don't know. I see Tracy's mouth moving, but um November. Okay, so it goes with the regular remote meetings uh, time that we uh, we will have, will be able to have purely remote meetings. Yeah, so uh, perhaps that's a question for another day, considering it's 9:07 and we have lots of things to do to to talk about what public questions uh, actually means uh, after that point.
Yeah, no, and that's a good point. And I think for now, this is a policy that And I think for now, this is a policy that will be effective at a point in time. And absolutely, if something needs to be changed in November, things can get changed. This is just a general review and everything's fluid when it comes to, once it comes to changing things. So as it stands, after, and with further research on the items that came up tonight, if everyone's okay with this, then we will present it at the next board meeting so that we can take it to legal for review. Thank you.
Joanna, is your question about the committees and appointments? Oh, you took your hand down or you've got a question? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, yes, it is. I have to say, I'm a little bit confused by all these committees. And maybe it's just the organization of the points. The, when I go back to the purpose, that kind of helps to ground me in, you know, you've got the statutory, non-statutory, and under that you can have standing ad hoc. So I guess what you would be missing here, then, is the work groups, correct?
Yeah, the working groups would come from the standing committees. So if the standing committee is doing a specific piece of work, they might ask at the board for the creation of a working group.
Okay.
So that they can bulk up, like, let's say, let's say that the standing committee has five members. Those five members don't necessarily work on each individual piece, right? They might have two members that want to work on a piece, and then they ask at the board for the creation of a working group to get three other trustees, up to three other trustees, to help with that work, which, you know, the more people that are involved, the better, as long as the groups are maintained under quorum. So it's always, and the view of it is to gain the interested parties, right? And make sure that the people are really interested in that piece of work, have an opportunity to participate in it, even if they aren't on the standing committee itself.
Okay. Yeah, it's just the categories and the layers and what can come out from, you know, a particular layer. That's a bit, that's where I need to wrap my-
If it was drawn as a flow chart, it would look better.
Yeah, exactly. And I like the examples where they're possible. So I don't know if there's other examples we could insert or even just for our own reference, maybe not in this document, but as a little kind of to help us, you know, like- Yeah.
Maybe we could put together a flow chart, Tanya. That might help.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So Joanna, what I've did, what I've done is I can understand the different layers of complexity. So what I did is, just on page one right now, I added an extra bullet just under the term Standing Committees, and I've added Working Groups so that you can see where that falls. And if you look on page 11, which is the Striking Committee Report, you will see examples of where things fall. So the statutory committees are named, the non-statutory committees are named. And right now, there's the three standing committees and then the different appointments that are available. So that might help you visually see the different layers of the committees that we have. Okay? Okay. Okay, with that, thank you for your time.
And the last piece that we wanted to accomplish this evening was putting together the scope for the naming and renaming working group. What is the scope of work to make sure that we've got it defined? And so I'm here with pen and paper and I'm listening. Whoever wants to go first, go ahead. It's an open mic. What would people like to see us work on, on the naming and renaming schools? Go ahead, Leah. It's an open mic. Go for it.
So I believe this committee, I would like to see this committee look at, like, forward-looking, not backward-looking. I know we had a motion earlier. I got some time to review all of our school names. And so I don't want to have that conversation. I really want, whatever this committee does, that it's looking from this point forward. And further to that, I would really like this committee to consider not naming schools after people. And I bring this up after a lot of thought. You know, I've always struggled with it because I felt it's been a risk to our board.
Okay, so-
Let me finish.
I'll let you finish, but I do want to just let you know, we're not doing the work tonight. So if your thought, if your thought is that you would like it to be discussed, that's fine. If you actually want to have the discussion now, then that's not the right place for it.
I understand. I want to share with you why I think it's, why it's important to consider this in the scope. Because I, are you just taking every, like, I would think that this discussion hears everybody's ideas, but I don't think this committee can do everything. Having sat on this committee before, there are lots of rabbit holes you could go down in lots of different directions. So I think it's really important to be very clear of the scope. So my recommendation is the scope is very forward-looking. And my recommendation would be to no longer name schools after people. And I think that's a really important piece, and I'm happy to go in at another time. But I also want to draw your attention that other school boards are currently doing this. So just bringing to your attention, the Hastings Prince Edward District School Board has a staff report recommending that schools no longer be named after people coming to their board. And the WRDSB school, as of June 2021, will no longer name schools after individuals or families.
Point of order, this is actually speaking to the work the committee will do, not to the terms of reference and the overall framework of the committee. I think that's an important discussion to have at the committee, but I think we're now doing the committee work rather than trying to figure out what we want this committee to do.
Fair enough. If I'm not on the committee, though, I would like to make sure this is a discussion that has been done. So that's all I'd like to say.
I've written it down. Joanna?
Thank you. I support that as well, and I would like to have that discussion. Furthermore, I would like to understand better the accountability, I guess, of the naming committee that's put together by staff. And where I'm heading with this is I want to understand the difference between a staff committee that's convened for operational issues, like, you know, looking at mental health or equity versus a staff committee that's pulled together really for the benefit of the trustees. Because with the school naming, the trustees use the work of that committee to make a decision. If we're making a decision, we need to have some influence and even be prescriptive around the terms of reference of the staff committee that brings this work forward to us.
But that's beyond our purview. That is the director's purview. And so we cannot do anything more than make recommendations. As we did the, in the last iteration, we made recommendations to the director as to changes that we thought would be suitable for the administrative procedure. But we cannot dictate the administrative procedure. That is the purview of the director.
Yes, and I keep hearing that, and I'm challenging that this is, the nature of this committee is in fact different. And I think we need to have that discussion with the director. The naming subcommittee that was, that worked last summer, or whenever that was, had created some draft recommendations around the school naming committee, right? Which is the staff instituted committee. But I'm not sure that those recommendations were ever considered or written up or discussed or, you know, that anything came of that. So we have a new director, and I think that discussion has to be had.
Tanya, do you want to respond to that one?
Oh, I'm going to be very polite. I remember writing the list of recommendations, sharing them with the former director, and some of the items were implemented, some of the items were not implemented. There was a back and forth. And what we have today is what the director implemented based on our recommendations. So even though we did request the director to consider our recommendations, not all of them were implemented. So maybe we can relook at that again. Yeah, so I would be open to relooking at what it is we can and can't recommend.
And I would say, too, that that doesn't speak to the scope for this working group. We need to be speaking about what we want the trustees' working group on the naming and renaming governance procedure to be discussing. Any information that we wish to convey to the director about the administrative procedure is not within the purview of the scope of what we, as trustees, will be doing. So I think it's two separate things. And we're talking about the scope for the working group that we're putting together now for the governance procedure. They're two different pieces, and I know that they work together, but we just want to get the scope. What is the scope for the governance procedure? Because that's the only thing that we have purview over. Jean?
Yes, thank you very much. I have in front of me the admin procedure and I have the board governance procedure. And we are talking about the board's governance procedure, correct? And in the board's governance procedure, it talks about the director's school naming committee shall include. I would like, as part of our scope, to review who's on the school naming committee. Is that part of our, no. Okay, it's mentioned in the governance procedure, but it's not for our purview. Is that correct?
It's the director's purview who sits on his committee. It's not our purview. It's his committee.
Then later in the governance procedure, our document, it talks about criteria. Proposed school names must ding ding ding. Submissions for proposed school names may ding ding ding. And I think that that was the part that was being spoken to by both Leah and Joanna. I think that's germane and very important to the scope of this committee that is to be formed.
Okay, I wrote it down. I didn't say I wasn't going to do that part. I just, I wrote it down. I just don't think we ought to have the discussion here. All we're discussing here is the scope.
Well, okay, so just, I'm amplifying the message. I agree.
Okay.
Thank you. If I, I just have, having sat on our most recent committee and having remembered some conversations that occurred by the committee, I thought that there was a view or a feeling that our way in which we collect school names or nomination of names needed to have a review. But again, that's maybe not our purview again. Okay, all right. I can see, as Tanya has just refreshed our memory, that there were numerous things that came out of maybe the last committee's work on this that really resulted in recommendations for the director's admin procedure. I can see that that might come out of this. That might fall out of this. Amy, if I could just be clear, you've asked us to define the scope of this group. I really feel that the scope can spill over into other things. I mean, we can identify one or two things to focus on, but because they're so integrated, these two documents, it's going to be hard not to spill.
What we will do is similar to the last time. The things that spill over will be brought to the director's attention. But once again, we don't get to say what the director decides to do with our recommendations. And I know that it's hard for us to sit and, because we're the ones that vote on it. I understand, I understand all the feelings around the table. Please don't get me wrong. I do understand the feelings around the table. I just want to make sure that we're clear that there are some things we cannot dictate. Donna, I don't know how long your hand's been up. There's been so many hands up. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Quite some time. First of all, I will go on record as saying that I agree with Leah and Joanna that I think that discussion does need to happen at the committee. I think it's an important discussion to have, and I'd be interested to see what comes out of that. What I'm looking for in terms of the policy is a clearer definition of roles and responsibilities, particularly of the trustees. What is the trustee role there? Because traditionally, it has been to bring forward the voice of the community. But if the voice of the community is bringing forth names, we need a clear understanding of what the trustee role is and also what that community representative role is. Because their job is to go through and find their names. And I want to make sure that we don't have things that are in conflict, that they come up with three names that then later we go, well, those are people. So we're not going to do people or things like that. So that that clear understanding of what everyone's role in, I think, would be clear. And I'm going to be really controversial here. Perhaps at the end of it, the committee may even want to look at, do trustees even vote on this? Because I am wondering if that is really the most effective way to have 11 people from different areas of the board that have only one or two have a concept of the community in question. Are they really able to make that kind of lifetime decision of a name on a school? So that might, again, be something that the committee looks at is whether the trustee even has a role in this in terms of the voting of it. That's just my thoughts.
Fair enough. So I'll add that to the list because I've not heard that suggestion before. Excuse me. Andrea?
Oh, there's Tanya. Sorry, Kelly and Tanya are ahead of me.
I'm so sorry, people. When you fall off the screen, then I don't see you. I'm sorry. Kelly?
Thank you. I think basically we need to relook at the criteria on how the names are chosen. We need to look at the, there's a whole section that outlines what names would be acceptable. And so I think that whole process is part of what should be reviewed as part of the review from the committee. And while I understand there's some strong feelings one way or the other about certain potential names, I think it's that whole section that needs to be reviewed about how, what names could potentially be brought forward.
You're on mute, Amy?
Of course I am. Sorry. So what I've got so far in terms of scope is that we want-
So what I've got so far in terms of scope is that we want to be forward looking. Where we want to consider whether or not we want to name schools after people. We want to focus on what is the accountability of the committee. We want to define the roles and responsibilities of the different parties on the committee. We want to look at whether or not trustees ought to be voting. And we want to flesh out the criteria. For for the suitable names, which the whether or not we name after people would fall under that. There's one thing on here that I wanted to to take a look at and that was the fact that we added back. The nomination portion of the procedure. Where prior, every name that was on the list was de facto nominated. We brought back. Actually having trustees nominate. And I want to look at that again because it it seems to me that when we have. The names coming forward, it puts a lot of stress on trustees. To make sure that this name or that name actually gets nominated. And it takes probably ten minutes to go around the table. And ask that question of every trustee. And more often than not, most if not all of the names are gonna end up on there. Because nobody wants to have a name not included. I think the only reason why that didn't happen the last time around was because we found out two of the five names. Were actually not suitable for the geographic area of the school. And so I I would really like that to be part of the scope is to discuss whether or not nominations are make sense. And if so, how to streamline it a little bit more because. The last couple of times we've gone through this naming and renaming process. It is taken like an hour out of a board meeting and that's a long time. I'm gonna go back to Andrea and then Tanya and then I think that's the end of the list.
Okay, so I just want to remind people that we formed. A committee in April twenty ninth, twenty twenty was our first meeting. We had twelve meetings under that committee and then we had two more meetings under recent reconvening of that news. We've had fourteen meetings on this. We did discuss. The criteria for the names, et cetera, et cetera. I think that what's gonna end up happening, because anything that comes out of the committee that says either we are naming. Are we gonna continue to name after people or not continue to name after people? I think that's gonna end up coming down to a vote either way. Because the committee is gonna come back with a recommendation and and I already know. Because I was chairing this committee for basically two years now. That that is a very divisive topic. So. Yeah, that's that's going to be fascinating. I am not going to chair this, I'm just putting that forward.
You put in your time, it's all good. Tanya?
Wow, Andrea, you you read my mind, so a lot of what you said. Was what was what I was going to say, we voted on this. We approved the revised policy where we allowed names to be voted on. I think I like the idea of going forward. But before we go forward, we need to take one step back and ask ourselves, why are we having this discussion again? What were the problems that came up at the meeting? Why are we here? And if I recall, it's because we weren't happy with the names that were presented. So if that's the problem, why weren't we happy? Was it the due diligence wasn't done? Probably not, because we were presented with five names and two were automatically removed. So there is a problem with proper due diligence in presenting items, item names to the board. Then there was an issue with, huh, maybe we weren't happy with the names presented. So what was it about the names that we didn't like? It met our criteria, so why are we here again? So I think we really need to look at, why are we here? Because I do not want to be here in another year having the same discussion. After having approved it, so. Maybe Amy, in your scope, it's to determine what are the pain points. That occurred at that meeting that are bringing us here again. Because we're just rehashing items, we need to.
I I think a lot of it was that the procedure became so complicated.
Sorry, point of order, Leah got bumped out, I guess, and she can't log herself back in.
Oh.
Could maybe Tracy or Andreas, could you send her the meeting links or maybe she can join by phone? Thank you.
Thanks for that, Joanna. I I think if I if memory serves correctly, there were a lot of questions about process happening. Which which signals to me that our process was too complicated. And so let one of the things I would like to focus on is making our process a little bit simpler. Because it's already stressful enough. You know, we're naming a school and 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 in some cases, people are gonna be disappointed with the outcome. That's never a good feeling. Tracy?
Yep, just. We've gone so far on this, all of the governance topics. We are into it over an hour and I just wonder if you're comfortable enough. There's no other hands up to package that up and yeah.
That's exactly where I was headed, I I that's why I was reviewing what was on the list. So then in terms of timelines, I was thinking the this work would happen during the summer months. And come back to trustees in September. I would not have it coming in October because the election is in October and that's just. That's not good to be bringing something that's part of trustee role that late. I don't think, so early September, that would be best. Second meeting in September at the latest. And I'm hoping that that's all right with everyone because we only have three meetings in the fall. Before the election. So. If that's all right with everyone, then I'll take that away.
I I just have a point to make and that is that with that just about the timeline is that whatever comes back. Will need to be in front of us twice and there may be other things that come out of that as well, as I mentioned.
Yep, but when I when I say that it it would come back by the second meeting. That means if it's the second meeting in September, that means that it actually doesn't get voted on until October. Which is why I'm saying that's the latest it can come back. And I would prefer that it comes back at the first meeting. Because I I think this could get stretched out to the point where we're beyond our our mandate.
Okay, well, thank you for helping the group take the next step then. And I'm not sure about your timing, but the agenda setting committee is. Or the agenda setting meeting is happening tomorrow morning, tomorrow late morning. So if you think. You'll be able to meet this round. Let us know. That'll be great. Okay, so thanks, everybody, and that was a whole lot of work. So imagine the time that we spent at the committee here tonight, probably. Amplified fifty to a hundred times all of the work that went in behind the scenes to bring all of this. Stuff, so thanks, Tanya and Amy very much for leading on that. And for everybody else who commented and pitched in. Including tonight, so we'll go on then to the subcommittee updates, three point five. And I'm gonna draw everybody's attention to the time, so trustee promotion and onboarding, was there anything for tonight in that regard?
The committee met late April and. We were looking to move to the onboarding side of things now and there will be. For the newer trustees, we're gonna be asking you some questions. Sorry, committee, I things have come up, so I haven't got that out yet, but. Yeah, so Tanya. And Heather and Margot, I know she's not here. We're just gonna be asking you what you valued most in sort of the coming into the. Into your role as a trustee and what would have served you, like what order would serve you? So that'll be coming out in a Google Doc for you to look at.
Super, thank you. And then in terms of reimagine forward. I just want to let every note, everybody know that Joanna. Andrea, Leah and myself hosted a community session last night. And I should also mention that Jean and Kelly were there. And certainly we mentioned that this was on behalf of the whole entire group. We had about. Thirty people register and in attendance, we had twenty five attendees. Including two students, six staff, six trustees and eleven members of the community. There was great discussion. The presentation that we made and developed collaboratively is in the meeting folder if people want to have a look. As is the meeting recap notes that we took of the. And the key things or the everything that people mentioned. And it was really great to see community members and students and staff all in the same space. And you know, sometimes respectfully disagreeing with each other. And and it looks like based on the metrics in the site today that. That encouragement really to put those ideas and stories in the site was taken up. We've had a little bump in in activity. So team, are there any or any of the trustees that were there? Any other comments or any questions from people who weren't there?
I just want to say it was great that the two students that were there actually spoke very eloquently about work that they. About things they felt were important and also some work that they had done. Assessing their own local cohort on some possible improvement.
Go ahead, Jean.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that our committee that ran this last night. He did an awesome job of fielding some pretty difficult questions and guiding people into the positive sphere that was. It was meant to be. I I I was in awe, I sat there, I thought, oh my god, how are they gonna answer that one? And you guys just, you just let it roll and and it was just so well polished and you. You were just amazing and so I I congratulate all of that that core group for that last night, it was very, very good.
Thank you, and. It's good to hear the diversity of opinion and ideas that are out there. This all brings, you know, good stuff for learning and for this particular initiative. So I just, I'll just leave it by saying the commitment was that. You know, we're not bringing forward only the ideas that align with. You know, what my thinking is or what our thinking is, but that we're bringing forward all of the ideas. Including highlighting where there are difficult conversations taking place and diverse views. So hopefully, in that way, we can bring together, just keep building public trust and interest in public education. Okay, so that's our subcommittee updates, we gained a little bit of time there back. Is are there any other business items? I know we have an OPSA item to consider, I do have one. And it speaks to the something Amy raised earlier about the professional development. And you'll recall a while ago. Trustees had made a request on how we can kind of take the next step with respect to the land acknowledgement. And what that looks like and Rob had emailed recently. To say that trustees had the opportunity to attend those learning sessions with Nancy Rowe. From Mississauga of the Credit First Nation. And a number of trustees did as they were able to take that opportunity and certainly Amy. Had promoted that to the group. And then it was envisioned that the next steps would be a learning session. Through with with Tammy Hardwick and possibly Nancy Rowe. But I think what Amy was saying and what Rob has also echoed is just that. There's a ton of things going on right now in the system and wondering whether. We can move it to the fall and then I guess the next discussion is. Should that wait until whoever the new group of trustees comes in? So I just want and and Amy, I. I don't want to kind of overstep here in terms of the PD subcommittee. I I don't know how it came to be that Rob and I were talking about this, but anyway.
It's perfectly fine, no no toes have been stepped on.
Okay, okay, cool, good stuff. So firstly, were are people okay to move it to the fall? Like to not, so I see some nodding and then. Do you do you want to make the decision now that that should be something for the new board? That that training happens kind of early on in the. As opposed to with this board or what would you like to decide? Go ahead, Andrea, and then Jean, looks like you have some commentary as well.
I I think that it is appropriate to move it to the next board. Because I think that, you know, we don't know. We don't know how many of us are going to return. If we're moving it to the fall, we have the training and then. Half of us are new or, you know, all of us are new. Then, you know, what what happens? So. I I'm very interested in the training, but I I think it's very, it's a very funny time. To consider what is best for this training.
I'll just chime in my two cents, Tracy, I agree with Andrea and I I think. I don't know what the term is, if we become a soft board in the fall as everyone is focused on the running again. And and if we do things a little bit lighter through the first month and a half as as the election process is underway. So that seems like a a great initiative to bring forward to whatever new board gets formed.
Okay, I see nods and no. Like this, so I can correspond to Rob and copy everybody. So we're all in the loop on on that. And maybe the question can be though, if there are other opportunities that come up in the meantime. You know, maybe there's some staff facing things that trustees. May be able to be invited to as well, so we can continue that learning in the interim. And I don't know that there is, but. Okay, so that's great. OPSA motions and nominations over to you, I believe, to Andrea.
Thanks a lot, Tracy, so. The. Board of Directors meeting was. not this weekend, but the weekend before. And at that meeting, there were a number of motions that will be coming to the AGM. And of course, Donna and Jean, if, if you have anything to chime in, or if you want to correct me, that's, that's great. So I've put the listing of the motions that at this point, they're draft motions. My understanding is that they could change between now and the AGM, but I think that their general meeting, meaning is is evident. And so I'll, I'll need to vote on these on your behalf. And I know that there's, the executive council has notes on the bottom. We are, but we are considering them with, you know, they're just providing some context for us. But it is, it is, I will be taking your, your will forward. So I don't know if people have had an opportunity to really look these over. I'm not sure if you want me to want to go through each one of them or if you've read them over and perhaps I, I could even make a form and you guys could let me know how you feel. And then we could, there is one more committee of the whole before going to the AGM. And that way, like we could, we could just start it off here tonight and then wrap it up at the next meeting. Additionally, the nominations just closed yesterday for the positions with OPSA. So I do not have a comprehensive list of who's running at this point. So that will have to wait until the next meeting to get your direction on, on voting for those people. Donna, go ahead. Just jump in.
List, and I would like to have a discussion of it, but because it will be about individuals, I would recommend that we have it in private session.
Okay, that makes sense. Yes. So we, we can go in camera at the next committee of the whole. Okay, so are people, Heather, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I'm just going to throw it out there and you guys can fire me if you want. I have some really good news and that there's someone sitting around the table here that won't, won't tell us, but she's been officially acclaimed as the Central West Region Chair again. So we all know who that is. Donna, congrats.
Oh, congratulations, Donna. That's wonderful.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So other than Donna, we will have to vote. So, so how about, yes, Tracy, go ahead.
Thank you. So I just, in terms of process and timing, and Donna may have some perspective on this, whether we do it at Committee of the Whole or whether we do this at board in private.
I think either or will work as long as it's in private. At this point, when I look at the chart, Kathy Abraham as president was acclaimed. There are a number of candidates running for first vice president, and there are a number of candidates running for second vice president. And that's really the only guidance we need to be able to give Andrea. And we also need to have a motion that Andrea is our voting member unless, I believe Amy might have already put that in the bylaws and we don't need that motion. And if you can just nod your head, that would be good.
It's not in the bylaws.
Okay, so we would need that motion to make Andrea our voting delegate and Jean her alternate, and that can be done in public session. But it's really going to be discussing those four or five candidates for, and again, just to give you an idea, past practice, what we have done is that we've given some guidance to our OPSA director, but we have not tied their hands. We've given them the opportunity to listen to the speeches that day because those are very important and vote what they in their heart think is the best thing for Halton District School Board in terms of the OPSA leadership. So it's not a big discussion, but it is just a matter of saying that, yes, we did discuss it is all.
Tanya, go ahead.
Two, two things. First one to Amy. It's not in the bylaws, but do you think we can include the voting designate in the committee's policy that we worked on?
That's where it belongs. Yeah, that's where it belongs.
There's an appointment. We can just add the one liner about their
Absolutely. And then, and then we can have that ready to be codified.
Yes, excellent. Okay. And then my next point is for Andrea. I know we were talking about the nominations, but as far as these board resolutions, I did read them. So is that what you're proposing to put in a chart format and we input or have the discussion today? So here's, here's where I'm at. So I did read all of the proposed resolutions and I also read the comments from executive council. And I agree with the comments from executive council. So there's, there's my feedback.
Okay. Tracy. You're on mute, Tracy.
Darn. I was just going to say that Donna noted that motions are, a motion is required to identify the voting delegate. So in that way, it might be better to do the discussion at the board meeting. So it's just a one stop shop kind of thing.
At the actual board meeting on, okay, we will, again, these are drafts. They probably won't be completely, that might be the June 1st board meeting. Just, just putting it out there. Amy, go ahead.
In the past, that's what we've done. I've just, we've discussed it in private session regarding voting on individual people. We've always supported anyone from our own board who's running for a position. And as, as far as the resolutions themselves, when I was the OPSA director, I would send, would have sent them out by email and asked for any comments. And then we would have had that discussion at either committee of the whole. Yeah, committee of the whole. Because that's not board business.
We do have one more committee of the whole before the AGM.
Yep.
So why don't I, why don't I make a form and people can put in some questions for each one of them if they have those sort of things so that we can spark that discussion if necessary at committee of the whole before we go.
I, I don't think it was ever necessary in the past. I think there was pretty much consensus on, on the resolutions. The, the conversation was really about who to vote for. Yeah. And that was always done in private.
Okay, so I'm taking some direction about the direction I will send out a form. We will meet in private session.
Okay, thank you. Are there any trustee questions and comments that we haven't already covered under other business or? Okay, great. I just checked out the public question submission form and there are none for this evening. So this brings us to item 7.0 on the agenda. Somebody like to make a motion like Jean to, for full time sake, to adjourn the meeting. Is there any debate? Thank you, Jean Gray. Is there any debate or discussion on adjourning? Any opposition? Okay, we can adjourn by unanimous consent. Thank you very much. We did it in time, such a heavy agenda, and we made it. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night, great week.